Good evening. I will call to order this August 5th meeting of the Lebanon City Council. Assistant Mayor Clinton Beal, acting in the absence of Mayor McDeMare. Manager Mahalan, would you... First, you're going to do the practice first. Yes, go ahead.
This meeting is being conducted according to provisions of RSA 91A, emergency order of patrol mission by the governor of the city of Hampshire due to the COVID-19 pandemic. It is not practical for the council to meet in person due to the virus that is spreading. It has not helped them to do so, nor is it practical for the public to meet in council chambers for the same reasons. Therefore, the meeting is being done virtually through Microsoft Teams. Also, this was distributed by phone. If you're participating by phone and you wish to speak, dot star six, anyone you recognize by Assistant Mayor Beal. That's how we may speak.
Okay. Now, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. We will hold the council's honor. This is the next pledge. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as for all. And I think our next item is for our city clerk, Ms. Kiniston, to do a roll call.
Okay. So as established, Mayor McDeMare is not here. So Assistant Mayor Beal.
It's here.
Councilor Bronner.
Here.
Councilor Heistat.
Here.
Councilor Hill.
Councilor Hill is here.
Councilor Prentice.
She's muted, but she's here.
Here.
You caught her mid-break.
Councilor Sykes.
Councilor Sykes is here.
Councilor Winnie.
Councilor Winnie is present.
And Councilor Zook. Okay, so she's not here yet.
Okay. Before I proceed, I just want to note that less than a week ago, Congressman John Lewis was laid to rest. And perhaps we could just have a moment of silence to remember him. Okay. Before I proceed, I just want to note that John Lewis... Okay. I was going to try to read a little bit from the essay he wrote shortly before he passed, but if you haven't seen that, it's worth looking up and taking a look at that. That was published just last Thursday in the New York Times. I do want to make a public forum announcement that any member of the public who desires to speak on any item may do so when the item is taken up by the council and will be allowed to speak on the subject for not more than three minutes. You will mean to try to signal us that you'd like to speak or if necessary, just unmute yourself and jump in and indicate that you would like to speak. We're also open to the public at this point. If any member of the public wants to speak on an item that is not on the agenda this evening, we could afford them up to three minutes to do so at this time. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment to the city council at this time? Hearing none, we'll move to acceptance of the minutes of the July 15th, 2020 council meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Councilor Beal also moved.
Okay, Councilor Hill. Leo Hill has moved to accept the minutes, seconded by Councilor Bronner. Are there any corrections or qualifications? Looks good to me. Hearing none, call for a vote. Ms. Kiniston.
Assistant Mayor Beal.
Yes.
Councilor Bronner.
Yes.
Councilor Heistat.
Aye.
Councilor Hill.
Yes.
Council Prentice.
Yes.
Council Sykes.
Yes.
Council Winnie.
Yes.
And Councilor Zook. Looks like she's still not here. So that passes seven. You're going to sleep.
Okay. Seven. Unless Councilor Zook just joined in, that was seven zero.
Yep.
Because two are absent. Next item, business appointments. And we have a number of those to go through. I think the first one up is Alex Bellens for the Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee. And let's see, who did that interview?
I did that.
Okay. Go ahead and present.
I would enthusiastically recommend the appointment of Alex to the Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee from his current status as an alternate member. I think that he's looking to be appointed as a regular member. He obviously, based on his experiences as an alternate, knows when they meet, what their duties are. He was very comfortable with the types of things that they are doing. And was actually, one point that he made that was of interest to me that was that he wanted to hopefully have that committee look at further smaller projects rather than just always big ones. The example he used was a smaller project was the bike rack at the end of the mall. So with that, I'm done.
Okay. And I would just note that I've served as an alternate on the Ped Bike Committee. And he certainly contributes. He does work for upper-level, like, some regional planning commission. And so I think he brings a helpful perspective from that angle as well. So does somebody need to move to put his name in nomination? Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I would move to put Alex Bellens to an appointment as a regular member of the Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, call a roll.
Assistant Mayor Beal.
Yes.
Council Bronner.
Bronner votes yes.
Council Heistat.
Council Heistat votes aye.
Council Hill.
Council Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice.
Prentice votes yes.
Council Sykes.
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Winnie.
Council Winnie votes aye.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, next up is... Is this the planning board application?
Yes.
Yes, so the city manager will address that.
So I just want to, I changed the process a little bit. In the past, as you know, my responsibility is to nominate people to the planning board. It's part of our charter. In the past, I didn't give those people by myself. What I decided to do is, and this started with this particular applicant, Kim, is that I would have the chairperson of the planning board and the planning director with me when I do the interview of that person, just to get some more perspectives on that and also help to answer some of the questions that the applicants might have. So that's sort of a new process that I have added here. And the other thing that I have done is, if the applicant is available, I've asked them to participate in this meeting. I don't see her listed as... There's a lot of good people on the phone call there right now, but I know she's participating in the school district meeting tonight as well. But anyway, Kim has lived over, for five years, in the city. Lives over in West Lebanon. And she has an interest in, she has an interest in what goes on in the city. Her professional background is in property management, which I think is very relevant to development as well. And she has been reading the articles in the paper, of course, about different development projects and wants to make sure that she can help the city work through the process of development and making sure that we have the quality of life that we have in the city. Just to be sure, Kim, you're not available on the phone. That's not you listed down there. Yeah, so she, I'm pretty sure she says she'll participate in the school district meeting, which is a pretty important meeting they have going on tonight. But in the future, I'll have my, the applicants that I'm nominating, when I ask them to be here, because obviously these are very important appointments. And that'll give you folks an opportunity to ask questions of that applicant in the future. That's the process, if they're available, that I'm going to be continuing to do. So for that reason, I nominate Kim, who's not choosing to be on the planning board, as a permanent position.
Is that a regular position?
Yeah, they refer to it as a permanent.
I think permanent.
Yeah, because they have alternates and permanents.
Okay.
We listed that term. We listed it as regular statues.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we can go to a roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Beal.
Yes.
Council Bronner.
Bronner votes yes.
Council Heistat.
Council Heistat votes aye.
Council Hill.
Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice.
Prentice, yes.
Council Sykes.
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Winnie.
Council Winnie votes aye.
Okay, approve seven to zero.
And the next one up is Jeremy Katz's application to be a regular member of the zoning board of adjustment. I think Council Winnie did the interview there.
Correct, yes. This is Council Winnie. I would be very happy to endorse and offer Mr. Katz for a regular seat on zoning board. He's been acting as an alternate member for about a year and a half. And there is a vacancy, so he is interested in moving up. I think, as, I don't know if every council has had a chance to read it yet, but he seems very thorough in my conversation with him, which was reinforced by the email he sent regarding some of the NHMA positions. I believe that was sent out yesterday or today. So he's there. He's doing some work now on zoning. And I think it would be a good idea for us to approve him for a regular member.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we can call a roll.
All right, Assistant Mayor Beal.
Beal votes yes.
Council Bronner.
Bronner votes yes.
Council Heistat.
Council Heistat votes aye.
Council Hill.
Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice.
Prentice votes yes.
Council Sykes.
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Winnie.
Council Winnie votes aye.
Okay, passes seven to zero.
Okay. Next up is... To catch up with myself, Gina Mickey has applied for a seat on, or has been an alternate on the Lebanon Energy Advisory Committee. And Council Heistat did the interview there.
Yes, indeed. I had a delightful talk with Gene again, as I did two years ago when he initially applied. He applied for an alternate seat. However, it's listed on this sheet as a regular member. And I'm not sure what the status is of that. But Gene has a lot of experience with energy-related issues, both in Seattle and down in San Francisco, and brings a lot of background and knowledge to LIAC and I think would be, continue to be, an excellent member. And I recommend him highly.
I believe we have an open regular position.
Yes.
So he could be appointed as a regular member.
Correct.
Well, I would recommend him as a regular member in that case.
Do you want to nominate him as a regular member?
I would nominate Gene as a regular member.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we can call a roll.
Okay, Assistant Mayor Beal.
Beal votes yes.
Council Bronner.
Bronner votes yes.
Council Heistat.
Council Heistat votes aye.
Council Hill.
Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice.
Prentice votes yes.
Council Sykes.
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Winnie.
Council Winnie votes aye.
Okay, approve seven to zero.
And I think the last one here is Fran, or Frances Handchett, who has applied to be city historian, which, as I understand, it comes with the need to also be either a member or an alternate member of the Heritage Commission. So it is, in effect, an application for that as well. And she did indicate in her interview with me that she would be happy as an alternate on the Heritage Commission, which makes the regular seat available for someone else who's interested in that. And I will go ahead and nominate her for the position of an alternate on the Heritage Commission and to fill the position of city historian. She's been very involved with the Lebanon Historical Society, which is a, you know, separate organization, but one that works off and hand in hand with the Heritage Commission. For many years, in particular, she's led the effort to identify and recognize the many veterans in our cemeteries of the early wars, particularly around the Civil War, but also going back to the Revolutionary War, 1812. And also she's done work on World War I, the veterans as well. And she comes with a strong recommendation of the Lebanon Historical Society to be our next city historian. And for that reason, I would please nominate her. So we can call a roll.
Assistant Mayor Beal.
Beal votes yes.
Okay, Council Bronner.
Bronner votes yes.
Council Heistat.
Council Heistat votes aye.
Council Hill.
Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice.
Prentice votes yes.
Council Sykes.
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Winnie.
Council Winnie votes aye.
And that appointment passes seven to zero.
Very good. The next item on Business is 7A, under Old Business. And it is the discontinuance completely and in its entirety of the western unbuilt portion of Folk Avenue between parcels 7851, 7852, and 7853 abutting Interstate 89 in Lebanon. And do we do the presentation first and then the public hearing?
Yeah, presentation's first.
Yep.
So this is a small section of roadway. It's grass, it's like, maybe just a little time. And then right at the end, Interstate 89. The property owner, she can read. Hold on a second.
Hang on, I'm trying.
Somebody needs to mute.
I was like, here it is. It's got a radio or TV.
I think someone muted.
Okay, go ahead. So Mr. Correct, one of the property owners, who they asked, made that cross the city, discontinue that section of roadway. Again, it's a very small section of roadway. If the council discontinues it, the middle of the center, that will be divided in half. One will go to the property owner on the right, which is Mr. Correct. The other will go to the property owner on the left. That's how that process works. We have done a little bit different. The map that we provided to you has grid coordinates in it. From now on, that's the process I like to use, is a map with grid coordinates. So 100 years from now, when people are asking where, what section of roadway is discontinued, instead of saying by Jake Smith's farm with a big tree where the road ended, or a rock wall, which is a little bit difficult to figure out 100 years later, we have grid coordinates based upon the datum that we have now. And that's why that map has that that's attached. We also have underground utilities underneath that roadway, which will require easement that will last for, as part of the discontinuance of roadway, the property owners that we allow to maintain that, those utilities. I think the roadway will come to do that. This has nothing to do with a piece of property besides. It's just a roadway itself. There's a property issue, you know, the piece of city-owned land. It's a little further to the right of that. That's a separate issue.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing to take any public comments or questions that anyone may have about this proposed discontinuance. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? I think we only see one person on the phone. Then we don't know who it is. So they'll just need to speak up if they want to speak.
Well, because we muted that person, they should get dot star six to participate in the meeting. And we'll give you an opportunity to do that. Again, we have one person on the phone. He's muted too because of some background noise. But if you wish to speak, just dial, there you go.
I'm just for the question that anyone may have about this proposed discontinuance. Could you, hold on. Could you state your name and where that you live in? Well, because we muted that person, they need dot star...
This is Fran.
We'll give you an opportunity to do that. Again, we have one person on the phone.
Well, Fran Handchett.
Go ahead, Fran, if you wish to speak on this matter, go ahead.
I'm here. I'm having problems hearing. And I just wanted to let people know that I'm here if anyone has any questions for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Fran.
And we are invited to approve you as city historian. And so you're in.
Fran? Yes.
Well, this is history, Fran. Okay.
I'm here. I'm here, I'm having problems.
Hang on, I'm in the chat, okay.
Okay. Okay. Hearing no other member of the public who wants to speak to this item, I don't know if we're able to close the public hearing. And turn to the councilors to see if there are any questions about this matter.
Okay, I'd like...
Think this is an artifact of the interstate going through. So this little section of road is a road to nowhere. It doesn't really serve any purpose except to support the utilities that are underground in that location. Would you make a motion? Council Bronner.
Move that the Lebanon City Council hereby discontinues completely and in its entirety the western unbuilt portion of Folk Avenue, located between the parcels identified as city tax map 78 Lot 51, 78 Lot 52, and 78 Lot 53, as shown on the GIS utility layer map and the GIS map showing grid coordinates NAD 1983, provided as part of the August 5th, 2020 City Council Agenda Packet. Being further moved, and as part of the discontinuance of the Folk Avenue right-of-way, the city shall obtain easement from the property owners of tax map 78 Lot 51, 52, and 53 for the continued maintenance of an existing public water main and fire line.
And a second. Council Prentice is seconding the motion.
Correct. Yep.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mrs. Kiniston.
Assistant Mayor Beal.
Beal votes yes.
Council Bronner.
Bronner votes yes.
Council Heistat.
Council Heistat votes aye.
Council Hill.
Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice.
Prentice votes yes.
Council Sykes.
Council Sykes votes yes.
And Council Winnie.
Council Winnie votes aye.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero.
We have a Council Zook who's in. She's not able to get into normal fashion. She may be able to participate. I don't think we can hear her. Council Zook. We'll register your vote. Let's see if you have Q and A in there. Let's see if that's for her. Yes, indicating she's having difficulty handling it. She cannot speak. But she's listening.
She could come join us physically here.
So do I count her as present or absent?
Well, she can't participate meaningfully, so she's not present.
Thanks.
Okay. Our next item, 7B, is another public hearing item. It is for the complete discontinuance of the east end of Fellows Hill Road between parcels 111-16 and 111-3 and 100 in Lebanon. So we're here for the purpose of receiving public input and taking action to discontinue completely that portion of Fellows Hill Road. And Manager Mahalan, the presentation on this.
This is very similar approach. It's a dead-end section of roadway that used to go on to Route 4. And now we have Riverside Drive, hasn't been used in how long? It's been very long time.
Decades.
Yeah, it's been quite some time. So the configuration's a little bit different. You can see that on the map. Again, we have the grid coordinates for the actual section of roadway that would be discontinued. We've had some discussions about this in terms of plowing. We don't see that being an issue because they actually continue on to that next house, which would be just north of where it discontinues. So that's not going to be an issue. We don't have any utilities underneath there, so we don't need any easements in that particular case. And again, all butters have been contacted, and it will be divided up. We also have a piece, as you know, we're looking at selling. And we have it on public tonight to talk about the price of that. So when it gets divided up, it's actually going to ultimately, if that sale actually occurs, it'll all go to the same property owner. It'll get absorbed into those two lots. That will eventually, again, if the council approves it, be one piece of property.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing to receive any public comment or questions. It does not appear as though there's any other members of the public in attendance. So I will proceed to close the public hearing and open the city comments or questions or motions by the council.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Council Prentice.
Sure. Move that the Lebanon City Council hereby discontinues completely and in its entirety the portion of Fellows Hill Road abutting New Hampshire Route 4 between parcels identified as city tax map 111, Lot 16, and 3-100, as shown on the GIS map, with associated grid coordinates in brackets, NAD 1983 datum, provided as part of the August 5th, 2020 City Council Agenda Packet.
Seconded by Council Bronner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call a roll.
Assistant Mayor Beal.
Beal votes yes.
Council Bronner.
Bronner votes yes.
Council Heistat.
Council Heistat votes aye.
Council Hill.
Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice.
Prentice votes yes.
Council Sykes.
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Winnie.
Council Winnie votes aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero.
And do you see that Counselor Zook is in the comments, but she's not able to speak?
Yes. I'm talking to her. Hopefully, she can either call in or come join us. I'm not sure if she's nearby.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure she was able, you know, that we include her if we can.
Our third public hearing item is 7C. It's to main ordinance number 18 to incorporate Lebanon Professional and Salary LPAZ wage and classification salary and positions and delete Article 3 bargaining unit employees for the Lebanon Professional and Salary employees LPAZ. And while the presentation over, from Manager Mahalan.
Yes, and I will ask Attorney General Laura Luskiewicz to speak on this matter. Laura?
Hi. Hi, good evening, Assistant Mayor Beal and city councilors. We are here tonight for the third reading and for public input and also for the Amassing the Act, council to take action, hopefully to approve this amendment. This is to incorporate the LPAZ salary plan into the non-union affiliated plan through a study, a wage and classification study that we performed earlier this year. It was determined that the positions are very similar, and that's why we're requesting the salary positions or the salary plans to be integrated. And we do have approval by LPAZ as well. With the, if the council agrees that this is the action they want to take, they're in agreement to merge the salary plans as well. We did a classification study that included nine communities with similarities basically similar to Lebanon. And we believe that this will be a very positive move for creating or reevaluating positions as we move forward. Uh, do any, does anybody have any questions or could I answer anything for anyone?
Um, I, I kind of have a question, just in terms of the format of the table, um-
Yes.
There's sort of dashes in some places and not in others, but I assume that in a particular, uh, uh, grade, um, it starts off with a hourly range and I presume that applies to that the line that it's on plus all of those below it until you get to where there's a salary range. And then the salary range applies to the person on that line and everyone else below that line in the same grade. Am I reading the table correctly?
You are, and thank you for mentioning that because there was a revision to the table under grade nine. Um, we, um, saw that the real estate appraiser two position in grade nine was actually placed underneath the salary schedule, um, and that is actually an hourly position. So a correction or a revision was made, I think earlier this week, I believe that that was sent to the council. So we're taking and moving that position above the associate planner so that it does identify that it is an hourly position and not a salary position. But you are reading the table correctly, any of the hourly positions are listed under the hourly amounts and then those positions listed underneath the, uh, weekly salary amounts are all salary positions.
Okay. Uh, so somehow we just need to get in the reference to the corrected, um, table in the motion.
Well, someone's attached, that's what's on your cover sheet, so that's what you're approving when it's attached. That is the correction.
In, in, in the, in the agenda packet at this point-
Right.
At this point, right now, it's highlighted in yellow. Which you can see here.
Are you looking at the website?
I'm looking at the one from the agenda packet on the website.
Yeah, the other one doesn't have it, you were at the item two.
Right, so this is the one that you're actually approving and has that chain in it, so when you read that, it's the one that's attached to that.
Okay. So-
So I'm just saying that to you.
Right, so, so did I, I already opened and closed the vote for you on this?
Yeah, you should have taken a poll comment.
I haven't yet, okay, we, we're just, this was the presentation, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, at this point, I'll open the public hearing, if there's any members of the public who would like to comment or have a question about this, uh, please speak up. And if you're on the phone, I don't see if there's anybody on the phone, but if you were, you didn't start six. Done, you. But seeing no public comment, I will close the public hearing and open this for discussion and action by the city council.
Uh, this is Karen Leo-Hill, I'm happy to make the motion.
Okay.
I'll move that the Lebanon City Council acknowledges the third of three presentations to amend ordinance number 18 salary plan Article 2 to integrate the Lebanon professional, administrative, and salaried employees La Paz into the non-affiliated compensation and classification schedule and to remove Article 3, Section D, Lebanon professional, administrative, and salaried employees. Two, uh, resolution, for the purpose of amending ordinance number 18 salary plan, now therefore be it resolved that the Lebanon City Council amends ordinance number 18 salary plan by integrating the Lebanon professional, administrative, and salaried employees La Paz wage and classification schedule into Article 2 Non-Affiliated Employees Salary Pay Plan and to remove Article 3, Section D, Lebanon professional, administrative, and salaried employees La Paz as shown on pages 57 through 62 in the August 5, 2020 City Council Agenda Packet. Is that correct?
As amended, you need to add those words.
As amended, uh, as amended. And I believe that is the end of the motion.
Yes.
Thank you.
And is there something to that, Councilor Honner's sentence?
Um, this is, this is Councilor Hill, I wanted to ask, um, Councilor Sykes, I know that you were the founder of La Paz and I guess I just wanted to ask your thoughts on, ask if you would speak to this.
So I actually had a few questions, but, um, I can, I can, well, if it's permissible, I'll start with the questions.
Sure.
So my, my assumption is that La Paz is still a recognized bargaining unit and, and that they can, whenever their contract comes up, they can renegotiate in terms of their pay and compensation.
Yes, they are.
Yes.
And then if, if for, for the sake of discussion that they do that and then they get some changes for individual positions, is that, how does that work to change, um, ordinance 18 where we have all these other non-affiliated positions integrated into this list?
It doesn't change any of that, it just puts them, they're in the same wage scale now, that's the only, the only difference, it has nothing to do with anything other than the fact that they're on the same wage scale.
But would we have to, if they negotiate a new contract and we approve, you know, we, we vote on and approve it as well, um, then we would have to vote and change the, this wage scale to reflect those, that new contract?
If there were to be changes to that, yes, if there was, if somehow they propose a new wage classification scale for their particular collective bargaining and we agree to that, then yes, we would have to change that if they agree with that.
Okay, but there's no reason why that couldn't happen as a, a normal course of business.
I'm not sure I understand that question.
Well, I, I just, it, I, I'm, I'm a little anxious about the, I, I guess I, I'm satisfied that, um, they will be able to continue to negotiate in good faith, the city will as well, and that if there are any changes, even on an individual position, it can be changed within this, within this, um, document that we have in front of us.
Well, yeah, you, you can do that, nobody has that authority except for the council to change the-
Right.
Yeah, right, the, the wage classification system is strictly within your purview. We have to negotiate, which we did, for them to go into the non-bargaining, uh, wage, uh, scale system. That's what they've agreed to, is to be put in that same wage scale system that the non-affiliated employees are in. Police have their own, fire has their own, ASME has their own, La Paz used to have their own, and now they're being integrated into the non-affiliated wage system, wage classification system.
But this does not affect their status as a bargaining unit whatsoever?
It does not.
Okay, in that case-
So, just, I want to make sure you understand that they have agreed that their increases, now their rate increases are based upon merit, the personnel evaluation, before they just got an increase whether they performed or not, that was their previous contract. This sidebar argument changes that so that any increases they get above the GWY is based on their actual performance and performance evaluation. That is the change when, when they move to the non-affiliated wage class system, that's what they agreed to. I want to make sure that you, you know exactly what it means that you're doing. That's, that's language in the contract, all you can do is approve the wage classification system, that is your role, and the other parts of that, what I negotiate with them, but I want to make sure you understand what this means.
I know.
Someone said they don't?
I, it's, sorry, can-
Council, uh, wait, wait, have you, have you, have you done?
Well, I'm just going to defer to Council Prentice at the moment just to see what her questions are.
Okay, Council Prentice?
I'm sorry, I, I kind of started speaking out of turn, it's the, the mute. So, they're still their own bargaining unit, they're still, are they, we have four in the city, are they still their own?
Yes, none of that's changing.
Okay. But the wage and classification will be the same as the non-affiliated, they wouldn't have their own independent?
Right, correct. They will, they're now being amalgamated into the non-affiliated wage scale system.
So, okay, so what happens when, I mean, can they, so when they say like maybe negotiate, um, you know, with obviously the city for, you know, um, you know, wages or, um, or benefits, are they, they're not doing that independently?
No, they're not.
Unit, I just, I, you, I think some of this has been talked about, I just want to be clear because I think I understand where, I, I just, I have a concern. I may have a concern, so help me out here.
All right, so, they had their own wage classification system before, so they had steps, um, they had grades, uh, they were, they were fairly different than what you have in the non-affiliated scale, right? If you look at fire and police, they're different, the number of grades that you have, the number of steps, they're all a little bit different. So they're, we're eliminating their wage scale system that they used to have and they're being amalgamated into the non-affiliated wage scale system. They're being treated in terms of they're, they're still a union, they still negotiate their salary increases, but now they're, they're amalgamated into this wage scale. You approve the wage scale, you don't approve the other pieces of sidebar agreement or contract, just the wage scale.
Okay.
So they, well, I, I, we, we really didn't get into the weeds of this, but I think it's important that you understand. So some of those employees, they would get steps each year, you folks are familiar with that. There's no steps in the non-affiliates, it's simply a range, it's very similar to what the federal government has, you have a band that you fit with that. You get your GWY which changes that scale every year based on the GWY's 1.6% this year, it'll be something different, smaller next year. And then you get a merit up to 3% each year based upon your performance. Before, they just got their next step, had nothing to do with their performance at all. Now, their merit increases is based on their actual performance, how well they perform in the job. That is the difference, which is a pretty big difference.
But they've agreed to that.
They have agreed to that. They voted on that.
So with no disrespect intended, where, how has it been documented that they've agreed to this? Did they, membership take a vote and they wrote to the city and said this is all good? Or was it verbal, or what?
No, they take a vote, they sign the document, like I've already signed the sidebar agreement.
Ah. Okay. I guess we, did you ever, would you have ever sent that to us?
No, because that's not something that you deal with, you only deal with the wage classification pieces at home, the wage scale.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm glad you're asking about it, I mean, you should, you know, it's good information that you should know. It would be a public document, oh sure, yeah, it's listed on PEO, I think it's somewhere, it's up there yet or not, I don't know, takes them a while to load it up there, available.
They're not fast.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good now.
All right.
Thank you for humoring me.
And me.
I'm glad you asked, I mean, it's, you know, even though it isn't your per se function, it's important that you know how this thing operates.
And, and my, my impression is this is partially a result of a long-term effort to get the non-affiliated more aligned with La Paz and vice versa.
Yeah, because the La Paz folks are very close to the non-affiliated, they're supervisors, they're technical people-
Right.
And, um, we're trying to treat, is, to the extent possible, to treat all of our employees very similar in terms of their benefits and, you know, there, there are things that the non-affiliates were getting that they weren't getting-
And vice versa.
Yeah, so we're trying to make that a lot closer to what it used to be. And a lot of those folks are topped out and now they have more room to grow, because their, their system was much smaller in terms of the room that they could grow in, now they have more room to grow. So in the long term, arguably it's better for them and, and obviously that's one of the things they took into consideration when they bought the trade route.
And it somewhat reduces tensions for people who are working sort of side by side.
Exactly, and that's the thing, it's like, why, why are you being different? We're supervisors, we're educated, technical people, why should we be treated different than the other than the non-affiliates?
Right.
And, and for us, it's important that people get their raises based upon their performance, the work that they actually do, not just for showing up. Put it simply.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, yes, um, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, uh, Mrs. Kinnison, uh, would you read the roll, go to all roll?
All right, Assistant Mayor Beal?
Beal votes yes.
Councilor Honner?
Honner votes yes.
Councilor Heisth?
Council Heisth votes aye.
Council Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Council Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Winnie?
Council Winnie votes aye.
And Councilor Zook, who has joined us?
Uh, Zook votes yes, and thank you everyone for your patience while I reinstalled Teams.
All right, so that passes eight to zero.
And I think for the record, she was able to participate at the start of this discussion, so that's when she joined the meeting, is approximately at the start of this discussion. Okay, um, moving on, uh, to other old business, item 8A, it's the New Hampshire Legislative Policy Recommendations. And, uh, we had started discussing this at our last meeting, I, um, uh, wanted to pick up perhaps where we left off and then, uh, perhaps at the end return to the right to know issue, I think we just, we did get, uh, Mr. Jeremy Katz did send in, uh, some additional comments and information to follow up on his comments at the, uh, last meeting of the council, but we just got those yesterday, so, um, I don't think we're going to get all of this tonight, we don't have to get through it tonight, uh, so, uh, my thought is, uh, we can return to the right to know part of those policy recommendations, um, perhaps at the next meeting when folks have had a chance to read and digest Mr. Katz's comments. Uh, so, turning to that document, we left off, um, around elections-
I think we finished elections, we're on to labor and employment.
Okay, so, yes, Council Sykes?
Thank you, so, so we're on the labor and employment, um, portion of this document now?
Yes.
Okay, I, I just, I, I'm going to point out my objection to the municipal association's position on opposing, um, uh, Evergreen clauses for public employee collective bargaining agreements. I've participated in many negotiations for, over my time as, as a, uh, labor person and in my time with the city and even before my time with the city. And while administrations can be very forthright like this one is and very, um, understanding, they're not always so, and sometimes it's almost impossible to get a contract. The last time I negotiated for a contract, it took us, we never, we did not get one for more than two years. And if we hadn't had an Evergreen clause, we wouldn't have, we would have been working without any protections whatsoever. So I, I, I raise an objection to this particular, uh, opposition point that they have in the document.
Um, so for any member of the public who's watching this after the fact, because it doesn't appear that we have much of an audience this evening, Rex, because of the school board meeting, uh, but, um, the, the detail on this was, is linked to in the council packet, I, I could read through the proposed policy, uh, Tim, uh, the mayor was doing that last time, um, or we can just, um, sort of trust you to be looking at it and, and, uh, discussing it as we go, I, I can go either way. But, but Council Sykes is, is objected to one particular bullet point under NHMA opposes, um, and, and maybe it's worth reading at least the overall policy statement, um, it's not all the details, um, it starts off by saying NHMA recognizes the importance of municipal employees, the need for good working conditions, and the right of employees to organize if they choose. NHMA also believes municipal employees should be free to set reasonable terms and conditions of employment or negotiate the same with their employees or employee representatives without undue state interference. Then it says NHMA supports existing laws governing public employee labor relations and opposes changes that impose greater burdens or liabilities on employers. Then it has New Hampshire NHMA opposes, and then there's a list of five or six bullet points. The first one was legislation creating mandatory Evergreen Clause for Public Employee Collective Bargaining Agreements. And that's the one Councilor Sykes suggested that we should not support and perhaps seek the deletion of, um, and this, this is important because, uh, if we want our representative, might be the mayor, to act the, uh, policy- And this is important because if we want our representative, who might be the mayor, at the policy conference, it's important that we give direction to them if there's a policy we don't want to support, although it's difficult, it may not be possible to actually amend the policy.
Oh, it is.
It is possible to amend the policy on the fly, on the floor.
Oh, yeah.
So for instance, just this one bullet could be taken out if there was support for that.
Right, our delegate could ask for a motion to amend that and take it off the consent calendar, and then a motion to move that and take it in the section.
Okay. Were there any other sections that were of concern to you, Counselor Sykes?
No, this is the, just, just in reference to the labor and portion of things, that's the only objection I had. I, I, I agree with them that public employees particularly should not have the right to strike. But what that does is, it means that they, it is far more difficult for them to close negotiations without that final, you know, really serious option, which makes the opposition to an Evergreen clause more problematic in my point, in my view.
Okay. So, Mr. Manager, how do you think we should handle this? Should we ask Counselor Sykes for a motion on this particular point? I think it's better to maybe hit it while we're on the topic rather than leave it for later to come back to.
Right, if I may just speak to that, I just talked about the state mandating municipalities to do that. If any given municipality wishes to do that on their own, have an Evergreen clause, which we do have in our contracts, then they can do that. But instead of having the state tell every town and city, "You must do this", it allows municipalities to have their own, make their own choices in their own communities, what's the best interest of their particular communities. That's why this is in here. It's not necessarily an opposition Evergreen clause, but mandating that every community must have that, that's the difference here. So if the city of Lebanon wants to have Evergreen clauses and provisions in their contracts, then they can do that if it wishes to. But to mandate that every town and city do that, that's what, that's what this is on in opposition to.
This is Counselor Hill.
Yes, Counselor Hill, go ahead.
So I, I agree with Counselor Sykes. I, and I understand what the city manager has said, but I also know that there are times during legislative session that there are issues that come up and the advocates for the municipal association have to look sometimes and try and divine the intent, the intention of municipalities on different issues. And I think by leaving this kind of a clause in there, even though it's really just about a statewide mandate of Evergreen clauses, it lends credence to the idea that municipalities are opposed to Evergreen clauses. And I, I am pleased that in Lebanon, we do have Evergreen clauses, because I think they are an important counterbalance for public employees when they're at the bargaining table, since they do not have the right to strike. And so I think they're important in our community, but I also think it's important from a symbolic perspective for us to make it clear that, that we are not going to oppose, you know, that we're not going to send a message that we're opposed to Evergreen clauses in other municipalities either. So on the one hand, I certainly agree with the concept of local control and local communities being able to make the decisions that are best for them. I would not feel comfortable supporting this particular provision if, or this particular policy if it includes that first bullet point of saying that we will oppose legislation creating a mandatory Evergreen clause for public employee collective bargaining agreements. So if there's anyone, I'm happy to make the motion, or I'm happy to second, or whatever the process is, but I would request that we would strike that bullet point and that we would make it clear to the representative for Lebanon that if this policy is taken up with that particular provision in it, that the representative from Lebanon should move to amend and strike that bullet point. And that if that amendment failed and the only choice was to either support or oppose this entire provision about labor and employment, that they would vote against this particular policy platform. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm with Karen.
Is that a motion?
Sorry, and George, yep, sorry. I badly behaved tonight, Assistant Mayor, I'm very sorry.
Okay. Counselor Hill, I think you had articulated close to a form that could be made into a motion. Would you care to repeat that as a motion?
Sure.
And you might just say, "Would I move that our representative at the NHMA policy conference take this position and then explain it?"
I move that the representative for the city of Lebanon take the following position at the NHMA policy conference with regard to labor and employment. That if, that first of all, the city of Lebanon makes it clear that we do not support the particular bullet point in the labor and employment provision that says currently NHMA opposes legislation creating a mandatory Evergreen clause for public employee collective bargaining agreements. Secondly, that if this policy position for labor and employment is brought to a vote at the NHMA policy conference, that the representative for the city of Lebanon will make, shall make a motion to amend the labor and employment policy, to strike this particular language. And that in the event that that amendment fails, that the city of Lebanon representative shall vote no on this particular labor and employment provision if it includes the language legislation that NHMA shall oppose, or opposes legislation creating a mandatory Evergreen clause for public employee collective bargaining agreements.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Counselor Sykes seconds that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll recall a roll.
Assistant Mayor Vila.
Uh, Vila votes yes.
Counselor Bronner.
Bronner votes yes.
Counselor Heisth.
Heisth votes aye.
Counselor Hill.
Hill votes yes.
Counselor Prentice.
Prentice votes yes.
Counselor Sykes.
Counselor Sykes votes yes.
Counselor Winnie.
Counselor Winnie votes aye.
And Counselor Zook.
Zook votes yes.
Okay, that passes eight to zero.
Okay, the next policy is substance misuse prevention and response. And it's NHMA supports programs to address substance use disorder in response to substance use issues to include treatment and recovery support programs. And I think we can kind of thank our city manager for bringing this forward. We endorsed having such a policy. The city service sponsored this because it kind of came in late. But from what I understand, there has not been such a policy for NHMA, so this is a new one. And it has several bullet points, that NHMA supports state funding to address substance use disorder, including prevention, treatment, recovery, enforcement, and legislation that supports those efforts. And opposes reducing funding for substance use disorder or recovery support programs or legislation that makes it more difficult to address the substance use disorder problem in our communities. Any comments on this?
I just had a couple of things. This went through the committee and NACs asked for a couple of changes, and they did some of the word changes, which we modified from the one that was originally submitted by the city of Lebanon. So there's a bit of participation in that. And again, NHMA has never advocated on any of the bills involving substance abuse, funding for municipalities in the past, and this is quite a big change, this is something that the mayor's asked for, the mayor's meeting about a year ago. That's a big issue, and it's totally affecting all of our communities. So this is the first time ever it's been advocated, and this has died a lot there.
So obviously, we assume that Lebanon will support this even though, you know.
I hope so, it would be embarrassing if we didn't.
But I'm going to assume there's a consensus for it unless I, and all these other policies, unless I hear some objections we go through. Any other comments on this one?
I think that this is a good thing, that we're moving in towards prevention, treatment, recovery. Those things are really important, and have not been emphasized enough in the past, and I'm fully in support of this concept. And thank the mayor and the manager for their efforts.
The next section is finance and revenue, that's just one of the three major sort of divisions or committees that were on these policies. First one is property taxes and related revenues. And the broad policy is NHMA supports legislation that allows municipalities to manage property tax levies in a manner that stabilizes tax rates and ensures equity, fairness, and efficiency in the assessment and collection of property taxes. And then there's a list of things that NHMA supports and things that NHMA opposes. I'm not going to read through all of those because they're fairly detailed, but we can pause them in it if folks want to skim through that, if they have that open. And this is the section that you worked on?
No, obviously, I was the one who just did NHMA, so I was not on this one.
Okay.
So I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So how does our attempts in the legislature to get a fee for hotel rooms to pay $2, that comes to the community, which has not been successful prior to this, what does this policy state with regard to that?
I think that's the next policy. This one is just focused on property taxes and things closely related to that. The next section is state aid and non-property tax revenues.
Alright, thank you, as long as we're going to talk about it.
Yep, yep. There's a fair amount of detail here, most of it looks generally good to me. The one interesting one that's opposed at the very end, hopefully this will not be a problem in Lebanon, but NHMA opposes an assessment methodology for big box stores that employs comparison to dark store properties abandoned or encumbered with deed restrictions on subsequent use. There's been issues with big box stores that have gone vacant, that the property owners argue that they're like abandoned properties and wanted to get rid of taxation, you know, minimize the property taxes on it. But these are just, there's a whole lot of detail in here that I've kind of got to trust the folks who've really dug into this and worked on it, view on this. Any comments or questions on that general policy? Seeing none, let's, I'm not going to try to go through everything, but I'm going to spend a little bit more time on this because we do have several significant things on our agenda, but let's do a few more of these. State aid and non-property tax revenues, NHMA supports funding of state aid to municipalities, supports legislation authorizing local control over non-property tax revenue streams, and opposes legislation that reduces, suspends, or eliminates existing local taxes, fees, or state aid. So that's capturing the idea of opposing reduction of the state aid. Particularly opposes suspension of the statutory catch-up provision of the meals and rooms tax distribution. And there is continued opposition to diversion of state highway funds for non-state transportation network purposes. But then there's a whole bunch of things that we support, and I don't, you know, includes local fee options. I don't know if it specifically calls out the little ader we tried to do on rooms and meals. But that is something NHMA, within this broad policy, did support that particular legislation that our legislation, legislative dedication and counselors advocated for. Does anybody have any concerns or questions about this? I think we can probably all support this policy.
This is Counselor Hill, and I just have, I just want to say that with regard to the catch-up provision of the meals and rooms tax distribution, I think it's good for NHMA to oppose it, but, but at some point, I think, you know, the rooms and, the meals and rooms tax distribution is, is set according to a formula that has to do with population. And so communities receive back, like Lebanon, we receive back a certain amount of the rooms and meals taxes that we collect, but based on our population. Except that our population is deceptively small if you're only counting the people that live in Lebanon. So we're sending a heck of a lot of meals and rooms tax to the state, we're generating all of that. We have all of these visitors on our roads, and we have, you know, we have, we take on the cost of being the, a hub, which is inherently where meals and rooms tax is being generated. And yet, communities that are not generating the same amount as us, but who might have a similar population are receiving the same as us. So I think that at some point, I would hope we can catch up to what the state had promised, which was returning 40% of meals and rooms tax to cities and towns. And I hope that we can actually talk about a fair way for the, for that distribution, the redistribution to happen. Because right now Lebanon is generating far more than it is receiving. And it's, we have a disproportionate impact, and we are receiving a disproportionately smaller amount. And that has just been something that has really bothered me for almost 16 years.
There was a bill, the last, this most recent legislative session, to actually do just that, to make a change that would allow those communities that produce more of the rooms and meals tax, to keep more of the rooms and meals tax. But as you know, most of those bills died with the legislative process that occurred this particular year. You know, whether it would have passed or not, anyway, I have no idea.
Yeah. I'd imagine that's tricky for NHMA because they have a lot of river towns that have the population that come to towns like ours for meals, but don't necessarily generate so much within their community, but.
Yeah, we would not take a position on such a bill because it would pit one community against another.
Right, right.
So we would, we would participate in the things we have listed on here to advocate that the state actually paid, it's never paid the amount that it was supposed to pay in the statute, never. And of course, even the catch-up formula got suspended, so it's never been admitted, not once. NHMA will support that, but if it pits one community against the other, it would not take a position.
Right, it would hurt NHMA, right.
That's one of, that's one of our basic tenets, that we will not do that.
Yeah. Any other comments on this? Yes, Counselor Prentice.
How many years has it been since they have not fully, you know, funded the revenue sharing under 31A?
They never have since, I don't think it was, never have, not once, ever.
And it stays in the statute, but then it gets suspended in the budget bill every year, in session law. So you don't see it in RSA. The same thing happened with the legislation to take a portion of the growth in profits from alcohol sales for substance abuse treatment and prevention. The very first year it was funded, but that was it. Thereafter, the law stayed on the books until they finally just suspended the law because they never funded it, or fully funded it. But it is what it is. I'm going to move on to NH, uh, New Hampshire retirement system, which NHMA supports the continuing existence of a retirement system for state, municipal, school, and county government employees that is secure, solvent, physically healthy, and financially sustainable, and that both employees and employers can rely on to provide retirement benefits for the suboral, for the foreseeable future. And of course, again, the first key support of the sort of detailed bullets is restoration of the state's 35% share of employer costs for police teachers and firefighters in the current defined benefit plan and successor plan. And so this has been an area where there has been downshifting of costs to local communities by reducing what historically been the state's commitment to. by reducing what historically been the state's commitment to share in certain costs. And then again, there's more detail under the bullet points, but it seems like this is a policy that we can support. Any questions? Maybe we'll do one more and then we'll be done with this sort of section. The last one concerns education funding. NHMA supports a revenue structure for funding inadequate education to meet state's responsibilities as defined by the Constitution, statutes, and the common law of revenue sources that are predictable, stable, and sustainable. And I think this, I'm going to read the bullets because they're pretty short. NHMA supports a revenue structure that is not disruptive to the long-term economic health of the state, a revenue structure that is efficient in its administration, and a revenue structure that is fair to citizens with lower to moderate incomes. NHMA opposes retroactive changes to the adequate education funding distribution formula after the notice of grants has been provided to local governments. So I think this is significant and that this is like the common ground from a lot of different political perspectives of local communities. So I'm hopeful that this can gain the support of NHMA because it is sort of.
It's not very specific. It's very general, but it is a progressive policy in the right direction.
So this is very interesting because this is the first time this has ever been in there. And every time it's been brought up in the past, it's been voted down. And the reason why is that this is not a responsibility of municipalities, it's school districts. The cities have asked us to put in it because some cities actually manage their school districts, their department like Manchester.
Right.
And there's more of a connection. It is, but even though, even those that don't have that as part of the city government have come to realization now, obviously, that it impacts, it impacts total tax rate in community and it's so critical to every community, no matter where you are, whether or not your school district is part of your municipality or not. So this is the first time it's been in there. It'll be interesting to see what happens when this gets on the floor, when it's removed from the consent calendar and his opposition shows. It's going to be interesting to see how this one goes.
Yeah. Yes, councillor Prentice.
So in, Mr. Mayor Beal, you had said that the, Dale said that the language, I mean, first of all, largely, you know, I do support this, but you said it was, it's, or maybe it was Sean said it's broadly written. So, you know, that very first point, a revenue structure that is not disruptive to the long-term, long-term economic health of the state. What do you think that means?
Well, it's one of those, the concern is that it would be some sort of bill that would be passed that would appropriate a certain amount of money and not, this would ever happen with the state would suspend that money and not make, not meet its long-term commitments to do that. In order to do, in order to provide the necessary funds, there'd be some major change in the tax structure of this state. That's the reality, it doesn't say that in here. And, you know, you can't do this one year, okay, this, this year we're going to provide 50% of the funding for schools, but next year, that's going to be 12%. That would cause some huge issues in municipalities because the tax rate would be jumping all over the place.
That's going to be one more. Okay, so maybe this is a less is more and that it's good that it's in here versus it's never been able to be in here before, but, you know.
I think, I think some of this is in the eyes of the beholder. So I think there's some balancing here. Certainly, there's going to be some people who are concerned that this is suggesting that we should have a sales or income tax. Others who feel like that is what we should do. But you can argue, you know, if you make your arguments of whether those kinds of tax structures would harm the economic health or whether they're fair. But I think as a matter of principle, you know, you've got some key concepts there for, to at least start to work with this, to grapple with this challenging issue. And I think it's very significant to say that one that's fair to citizens with lower to moderate incomes because that is an issue. Because we know the property tax can be disproportionately burdensome when people lose their income or when they retire and have a fixed income. You know, it's really hard to manage property taxes that keep going up. And it's, it's a burden.
This is councillor Hill.
Yes.
I have a question for you, Assistant Mayor Beal. I, I think that some of the proposals in the past about different tax structures have specifically included language that would, that would, that would require a certain amount of property tax relief to, you know, to, to be triggered by the adoption or by the generation of revenue by a different source. Is that something that, am I correct in thinking that? And then also, is that something that you would recommend? That we might explicitly put into this kind of language so that it's clear that this is a measure to, yes, generate additional revenue, but not, but, but that part of the goal would at the same time be to provide property tax relief?
That is true that some of the legislative proposals in the past have sought to do that specifically, a variety of them with different sponsors. I, and so haven't. I think at this point, it would be difficult to try to revisit additional language to this particular policy.
Well, you could amend it. I would just be cautious that some people are going to look at that and they're going to say, this means we're advocating for a state income tax. If you read between the lines, some would argue that that may be the case. I suspect this is going to be very controversial because of that. And some, maybe motions from other communities to modify that further and says, maybe we don't support any broad-based tax. I just don't know how this is going to go.
I guess what, the reason I'm asking is I'm wondering if we were to proactively offer some language that would say, you know, we support these things as long as they are connected to some sort of property tax relief measures, would that make it more palatable to other communities?
Well, I think if you're, if you're asking the legislature to put measures in place that would limit municipalities' ability to raise revenues, you're going to get a lot of opposition to that because that's the last thing that municipalities want is the state telling them what they can and can't do, like a proposition 13 or two and a half like you have in Massachusetts and California. I think if you advocated for that, that would be dead on arrival at NHMA in terms of the municipalities, having the state tell them, we're going to provide you this much revenue, but you can't raise your property taxes any more than this amount. I think there'll be some serious.
No, they could tell the schools that, not us, the schools.
Yeah. Yeah, there are two sides to that coin, and it does get to be tricky.
All right, I'm satisfied. It sounds like it's too controversial, and so I guess I could support this from the less is more. But honestly, some of these bullet points seem like euphemisms to me for basically not supporting a broad, like, I guess someone could read it to say that this is about supporting a broadband tax. But I read the first bullet point and the second bullet point as almost backdoor ways to, to sabotage any efforts to put in, you know, you, certainly someone is going to say, oh, you want to do an income tax? Well, we're going to have to create an entire new bureaucracy to do that. We can't do it because it's not an efficient, you know, it's, it's not efficient in its administration. So I think, you know, I read this and I wonder if some of this language is actually already designed to sabotage any kind of a broad-based tax. But if we think it's sort of less is more, I'm happy to support it as a, as a, you know, a modest first step.
Councillor Prentice.
So councillor Hill, you know, I agree. I'm a, I'm a little torn because I see what you're saying, and that's why I asked that first, the question about that first bullet point. And, but I, the only, the hope or the silver lining here is the final one under supports, which is a revenue structure that is fair to citizens with lower to moderate incomes. So, you know, maybe this is an, an attempt to have it both ways as the discussion opens.
Yeah, and I think even, there, having been through these fights in the legislature, there are some sales tax and there are some income tax proposals that would not be efficient in administrations or particularly good for the economic health. There are other ones that I think there are fairly strong arguments that could be done very efficiently and would actually benefit the economic health of the state. So like I said, it's somewhat in the eyes of the beholder. I think this is general enough. It's not going to get NHMA into too much trouble one way or the other. But, but I think when you look at the diversity of leadership of all the municipalities in the state, this is a tough one to navigate. But, but in general, pre, pre-principles of predictability, stability, sustainability, and fairness, and being good for our economy, those are ones that everyone should support. And then, then you get into the argument about whether a particular proposal actually does that or doesn't do it. And fundamentally, this is, you know, what NHMA's position on this is not going to have a great deal of influence in how this plays out in the legislature. But I still think it's progress that this is being seriously considered by NHMA.
But councillor Hill's point is, I think it's a good point. I think what's going to happen on this, it's our advocate, if this passes, our advocate, there's going to be a bill of some sort that might come in, and it's not going to be real clear on what they should do.
Right.
So what I think they're probably going to do, they'll come back to the board, the board of directors, and say, look, it's, I'm reading our policy positions, but it's not real clear what I should do on this. I want further guidance before we move on that. That's it if this even gets off the ground in the first place, which I'm skeptical of.
Right.
And it gets passed. But to, to your point, NHMA is not going to be the big dog in this fight. It's going to be the school boards and other groups collectively, yeah. So it, it's one of those, we only have one advocate full-time and two part-time people. And all the list of bills that are in there, this would be probably one of those things, something right, maybe, that we support or deny, support certain portions or those others, and probably not even testify because of all the other bills we have.
The next section is infrastructure development and land use. And I participated in that committee's work. And some of what we approved here was, did influence the very first one. But because of the hour and we have some substantive things still to get to on the agenda, I'm going to suggest that we leave that section for another meeting as well as coming back to the right to know piece. Hearing no objection to that, I'm going to move us on the agenda to new business. And the first item up there, 9A, is presentation of the second quarter, a budget report.
Thank you.
Yes.
The general fund second quarter indicates that approximately 56.8% of the appropriations have been expended, which equals the increases. We're a little under from 2019 second quarter, about five and a half percent. Exhibit A shows the departments and the percent expended. For revenues, motor vehicle registrations for April were down 40,000. May was down 50,000, but June was up 46,000. At the end of June, revenue was down 6% compared to June of 19. People weren't sure in April and May what to do. Did they have to register their vehicle? Do they wait? We weren't open. So once clarification came out, June was busy. And also July brought in 20,000 more than last year. So we're starting to pick up now with registrations. It's still down a little bit from 19, but we'll know more as the months go by. And the land service revenue is down still 30% compared to 2019. Recreation programs have all been canceled due to COVID-19 restrictions. So revenues for this year totaled 159,000, that will be received now. The tax bills were due July 1st. At the end of July, we are 96% collected. The assessing board approved, I believe, five payments for payment plans, which will begin next week.
Six.
Six payment plans. Exhibit B shows the amounts budgeted, collected year-to-date by general revenue category. Is there any questions regarding general fund? So exhibit C shows revenues and expenditures for the other funds for the second quarter. The tipping fees are down as well as recyclable sales. However, coupon sales have increased 140,000 from 2019. We now have some of the businesses come in and buy a different color ticket that sell at their business, and that is booming, which is good, that helps us. The water revenue isn't down right now from 2019. The sewer revenue is the same percentage collected as 19. And 2020 is budgeted for a million more revenues, so we're doing, we're doing well there actually. Municipal airport revenues are down about 6%. However, they have received approximately 13,000 more than last year due to the estimated revenue being higher than 2020 versus what we, we budgeted for 2019. As far as expenditures, all the funds are at approximately the same percentage than as last year. Any questions on the other funds?
This is our finance director, Vicky Lee. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to, I don't know, 99B, proposed RSA 204E, Uniform Electronic Transactions Act. That's the manager Mahaland.
So yes, this is the statute that allows us to do electronic signatures, electronic documents, and electronic transactions. Passed in 2013, I believe it was. On the books for a while, and there was a requirement in that statute, I'm sure you've read it, that DOIT administrative services and the Secretary of State's office is supposed to issue guidance that allows municipalities and state agencies to have those documents and do electronic signatures, which everybody, of course, has been doing, including state agencies. They, those agencies never developed any administrative rules. They do have a policy document that they issue, but they specifically put in there that applies to state agencies only. That's not what the law required of them. I just received that actually last week after multiple requests to determine whether they had any administrative rules that I simply couldn't find or anything else. And that's what I had finally received from them. But again, it only applies to state agencies, which is not the charge in the statute. So you have this issue of, it's somewhat ambiguous as to what the municipalities have that encounters. Have the authority to have electronic signatures and use electronic documents, allow them to pay electronically, all those sorts of things. So we ask, NHMA asked for a word to it from the government, which is in effect right now is to make that clear because everybody's using electronic signatures and documents now due to COVID-19. But again, since 2013, pretty much every municipality has been doing those things anyway. So I propose a bill to clarify the statute that they can set standard if they so choose to. But other than that, we're allowed to use electronic documents, create those, and electronic signatures. If they want to provide some guidance on that, that would be certainly helpful, which they have chosen not to do, which the statute tells them they're supposed to do. I have reached out to them, asked to discuss this with them, and I have not heard back from the deputy commissioner of DOIT, maybe on vacation, I don't know. Although I can bounce back on his email, but that remains to be seen. And to work with them on the language of this bill, it's more of technical changes. It really doesn't have a whole lot of substance of that. And I just want to make sure you don't have any opposition to that. This is a legislative issue which fits more in your realm than it does mine. But it needs to be addressed in one fashion or another. So unless there's any opposition to that, I'll just move forward with that and get a sponsor to sign on to that, or multiple sponsors.
Makes sense to me. Any questions or concerns by the councillors? It looks like you've got consensus to move forward. Next item up is 9C, discussion and authorization for the city manager to begin the sale process of tax-dated property of mobile home located at 695 Dartmouth College Highway, Tax map 99, plot eight, plot 200. Andrew Mahaland again.
This is a mobile home that we tax-dated last year, and we've been working on property, let's see if they can repurchase the property. They're unable to do so. The homeowner has subsequently moved out, moved to the state of the law. And we've issued a letter regarding to 89, along nine days to repurchase the property with our intent to dispose of the property. And I recommend that we do that by sealed bid. There's approximately $29,000 in taxes and other liens that are owed, that doesn't include legal fees that have occurred. It's assessed at about $41,000. It's assessed at about $41,000, although we don't think it's worth that much money at this particular point, present condition that it is in. So this is the process in which we move forward to dispose of the property. It's in a mobile home park right now. The previous person who was living in there, the owner, was paying rent all this time, but they won't be doing that any longer. We continue to, we own and have one for a year. We continue on, and we'll have to incur those costs.
Counselor Prentis?
So they're not living there?
Correct.
They were renting from the property owner.
No, because she has, she was paying the rent when she was living there all this time. But otherwise, we would have been liable for that rent because we own the property, she doesn't.
Okay, oh, okay.
So she's been doing the right thing, she's been paying the rent.
But she only recently moved out.
She did, yes, for example.
Okay.
She actually has a couple of things left at the, at the mobile home, and she has to move, I've been in contact back. She has a couch, she can't get out. Yeah, she has to work out for maintenance to do that.
That's what Prentis?
We're not displacing anybody, we're just taking this next level of action on a property that is now empty.
Right, she's living with a relative in the lawn.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we do need a motion.
Okay. Move that the Lebanon City Council authorizes the city managers to dispose of the mobile home located at 695 Dartmouth College Highway, Tax Map 99, Lot 8, Lot 200 by sealed bid in accordance with the general provisions of RSA 80:80, as well as the applicable provisions of Chapter 80 in general.
And second by...
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Heistad. Any further discussion?
Yes, so the way that that would work is we would do the bid process, and whatever we get, we can accept those or not. So how do you wanna proceed after that? Do you want me just to accept the best, obviously the highest bid, and then continue with the person's sales agreement? Do you wanna come back and tell you? How would you like me to move at that point?
I don't have an opinion on that. I would just offer that I think in this instance, we should just move forward as expeditiously as possible so we don't start incurring rent charges that, of any significance. And, you know, apparently the unit's in not very good condition, so it may not bring in the full value. But if it's put out to bid and it's competitive sealed bid, then, you know, the best offer will be the best offer and a market price.
Well, it probably won't be a market price, it's probably significantly lower than that.
Well, a sealed, I mean, a bid that anybody could bail on, right, sort of this by Jeff, it's not a market. It's what the market will pay at this point in time.
There's still a course, an added period, which you receive the letter on, so, you know, there's gonna be a period of time where they're gonna incur costs. Right. I don't wanna have to do, we're gonna wire rights and sort of thing a lot of times. But we can dispose of it, get it off our hands, not to worry about the maintenance, it's better off like that.
Yeah.
We don't wanna be a landlord.
No, we don't.
So Prentis, the amount of the, the amount of the lien is $10,567.20?
No, it's like $28,000 plus there's another lien for additional $400,000. And then there's the legal expenses we've incurred thus far.
Okay, so it's over $30,000. So are you, you're anticipating that we're taking a loss on this no matter what?
Yes.
Okay, fine, then I would, I would support authorizing the manager to just accept the best, the best offer.
It wouldn't surprise me to see a $5,000 live bid.
Yeah.
Where I worked before, we had a lot of these, and what, we didn't get anything for. What we would do is pay all the taxes, the park owner would remove it, no charges, they wouldn't charge the park rent, they would dispose it at their expense and bring in a new one. If it was a quality mobile home and it was of some value, they'd pay us the taxes, so, but I'm thinking of financing the case here.
Because lots of stuff in 2005.
Look. It's not that it's old, it's just the condition that it's.
It's now.
I think we're in a position, meeting to move forward, and authorizing the manager to go ahead with that, I think it's their best deal.
Would you like a motion to that effect?
Well, that's what that, that's what that motion already does. I just wanna make sure you understand that's what it does, if you wanna do something different, that's fine, but, you know.
Okay, because it is authorizing you to go ahead and dispose of it by, by bid. All right. Yes. Yes.
Move that the Lebanon City Council wants our, the city manager.
Right, yep. Counselor Prentis made it, and Counselor Heistad seconded it. All right.
Sorry.
Guess I don't believe reading.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Kidiston, would you call a roll?
Assistant Mayor Beal.
Beal votes yes.
Counselor Broner.
Broner votes yes.
Counselor Heistad.
Counselor Heistad votes aye.
Counselor Hill.
Hill votes yes.
Counselor Prentis.
Prentis votes yes.
Counselor Sykes.
Counselor Sykes votes yes.
Counselor Winnie.
Counselor Winnie votes aye.
And Counselor Zook.
Zook votes yes.
That passes eight to zero.
Okay, our next item of new business is 9D. Discussion and set public hearing for August 12th, 2020, if that's the will of the council, for an emergency ordinance number 2020-11 requiring that persons wear face masks under certain circumstances. Mr. Mohan.
So this came out of a request of a business owner, and the mayor asked me to put together an ordinance that would, please give it to the councils with the council committee determination, how it chose to act on that. What I did researching that is Nashua had an ordinance, the first community in this state to pass such an ordinance, which so far has been successful, successfully upheld at least. The court would not issue an injunction that was filed by a private party to prevent the city from moving forward on that. It's certainly not the definitive answer on that. It's, that'll obviously continue, that'll go to the, Judge Kishinger is gonna be handling all these cases in Merrimack County Superior Court. So that case will now go up there and be decided on the merits of the case. So Judge Coburn would not agree to the injunction to stop the city from doing that. And there's a court decision, I think that was in your packet, which outlines that. This is obviously uncharted territory, you've got a legal, a legal counsel, pretty much explains that, but you already have that. No, we don't get that to lap towards the timings in issue here. In terms of for our city, we're impacted obviously by the Dartmouth College students coming back from all the world across our country, and there's, there'll be a higher risk in that regard. Our cases in the state of Hampshire are slightly increasing, it's certainly not a surge by any means. But they're, we've been fortunate, our state is, it's been one of the few that's left in the country that has not seen a resurgence of COVID-19 in a major way. We still have cases clearly, the numbers indicate that. But so far, we have not seen surge here yet. And of course, the goal is not to have a surge. We don't want a further shutdown, and whether or not that ordinance helps to mitigate the risk of further economic impacts on the community, that's one of the primary reasons for these, of course, the public health, which is, is the primary reason, protect that public health. Other towns, the town of Durham, the town of Hanover, Hannah and Fields have passed those Monday night, I hope. This is the past Monday night. Just looking at one as well, I don't know where they stand on that. And of course, our city is not aware of any other communities that are doing that. But as you can see what's going on in the rest of the country, there is certainly a reason for concern, even though our cases are, again, increased slightly. And I've got a survey here, the goal is to prevent them from occurring. And staff had reviewed this, the MD, and the health officer, as well as myself, and we concur with the ordinance as it's written, at least proposed to you, for the city.
Yes, Counselor Prentis.
So when would be appropriate? I, I have a few, I have a few comments. Would, we wanna wait, you want me to make them now or after we make a motion? I know what we're doing here is just setting a public hearing, but I wanna make my pitch for why I think we should have this public hearing, so.
I, I think it's appropriate to go ahead and discuss first because if there's anything we wanna tweak about the language, we should do that now before we send it to public hearing. So I would suggest we go ahead and discuss it, and then, then we can make, you know, somebody can make a motion if you'd like.
So it sounds good. So a couple of things. One is that I think that we have to look at this, this isn't, this isn't about the Dartmouth College students returning. This, I mean, for Lebanon, even though we're part of the greater Upper Valley, the Connecticut River Valley, we are, we're a regional hub, and there are people that come here from all over. And I'd like to look at it that way. I wanna talk about who the health, what the health officer or police officer role is. I wanna talk about the fees, but first, I just wanted to say that, that history repeats itself. And there's, some of you may have seen this New York Times article that, and it was just out on August 8th, it was titled "The Mask Slackers of 1918." And so here we are again, informed on our current events and by our own history. Then, as now, the medical authorities said wearing masks would help slow the spread of a disease. And then, as now, some resisted. So this is a global fight that's on our doorstep here in Lebanon and in the Upper Valley. And according to the director of the CDC, this is the Robert Redfield, we are not defenseless against COVID-19. Cloth face, cloth face coverings are one of the most powerful weapons. We have to slow the stop, slow and stop the spread of the virus, particularly when used universally within a community setting. So we all have responsibility here. All Americans have responsibility to protect themselves, their families and their communities. The health and the well-being of our community matters, and that's why we're discussing putting this ordinance, or this proposed ordinance forward to a public hearing. But we all have a role in this fight against COVID-19, and that common sense measures we've seen, and the manager brought these up already, they've mattered really the most. Wearing a mask, washing your hands, physically distancing from people whenever and wherever possible. And this is, you know, until we have a vaccine or therapeutics, whatever's available. So we know that, well, therapeutic is temporary, vaccine is, you know, the more broad-based and preferred, let's say preferred approach, that's what we really need. So our neighbors, we've talked about, they've already done it. And I think what's impressive here is that the Business Alliance, the Public Health Council of the Upper Valley, Hanover, Enfield, they're working on this mask up New Hampshire. And I just wanna again focus back on that we are a regional hub. The people come here from throughout the Connecticut River Valley to work, to play, to shop and to eat. And I don't expect that to change, but what I do wanna make a difference is in the future for all of us, our families and our children, and how we mask up, and that's now. So with that being said, how, the two questions that I have or wanna talk about, I don't know if we're gonna tweak or not. The health officer would be in charge of, if they saw, like, me walking, I was in a store, or one of the places, say that this was not, you know, this was, we were supposed to have a mask on and I didn't have one on, who's, who's the health officer that's gonna rein me in? Is it the one health officer we have? Is law enforcement involved?
Law enforcement will be dealing with those issues. When the health officer gets involved, it's there enforcing the provisions emergency was issued by the government of the state of Hampshire, the private public health services. So for instance, we get a call for a daycare center that's not following the guidance. The health officer was out, goes over what the guidance is, goes over that piece with them. If this becomes an ordinance that's passed, this would be an law enforcement call. Police would respond, issue guys, people, hey, look, you're supposed to wear a mask. These are the reasons why we're doing that. Here's a mask, by the way, if you don't have one. We'll provide those to you. So it's, it's an educational tool more than anything else. Really, the goal here is not to be fined people. The fine numbers are what they are as a deterrent. So I really don't see what fines being issued here, hopefully none. Because our goal is gonna be to educate people and get voluntary compliance with this, not by issuing tickets. Now, if you get somebody who absolutely refuses to wear a mask in a particular store, or we get a call from the store on it, chances are they're gonna be charged for criminal trespass because they refuse to leave the premises instead of this particular ordinance.
Okay, so if there's, just for clarification, the health officer would go out if there was, you know, like a mask, say a party or an event, or you mentioned a daycare center where this wasn't being followed versus somebody that was in a, you know, in a more public setting where there may be some, I don't know if confrontation's the right word, but, you know, some not, there was some resistance to this, and that's when law enforcement would be involved?
Yeah, this is not gonna be enforced by the health officer, this will be law enforcement will be doing this for you.
All right, I wanted to be clear about that. And then in terms of the fines, you know, I think having an ordinance without any way to really enforce it, you know, it's kind of, you know, besides just enforcing this amongst each other as a community, which I believe we have this job as, you know, here to do that, but $100 for the first time, what was the other, $250? Do we, anybody else, I mean, feel like that's, that's on the high end? I mean, could we, you know, so, I mean, I feel like $100 for the first time might be a little bit high. That's, that's just my opinion.
When, when the manager first shared the draft of this with the mayor and myself, I suggested, and the mayor initially also agreed, that we go wider. The first offense be a written warning, second offense 25, then 50, then 100, then 250. But I'll let Manager Mohan explain. I think the concern is if you issue a ticket for $25, the person can just blow it off and the court won't enforce it. Because the court, the court will bother with something that's small. So if you wanna just elaborate on that.
That's the same problem. I don't really wanna advertise it, not a lot of people on here, but our parking tickets, the court won't even entertain me because the dollar amount's not even worth their time, so that's how they view that. But again, the goal here is not to write tickets to people. It's, the goal is to get voluntary compliance and deterrence. That is what the purpose is.
So Counselor Zook, then Heistad, then Sykes, and back to Prentis. Or someone else wasn't spoken. Counselor Zook?
So I would argue that especially if the officer enforcing it is offering a mask to the person, like, that cost is not going to be, it's not gonna be like unduly levered against somebody who can't supply a mask to themselves, like they're being given one. And if they're refusing it, then... I do have a question about in paragraph two. I just wanna make sure that under the way this is worded versus where specifically like parks and recreation areas come up, that an event such as the farmer's market would be counted as governmental, a governmental area where business is taking place? Because that's something that happens specifically in our community. If it doesn't seem like that's being covered, maybe we could find a way to get that in there. I know it's already being enforced at the farmer's market, but I think it would be beneficial to the staff that are responsible for enforcing it if there is an actual... I know they've had a little bit of pushback from people who say, you know, there's no law. So if we could get it in the law, that would be great.
Well, there doesn't need to be a law because I, I'm responsible for all city property. If I say we're gonna wear masks in there, which I have, they have to do that. And if they don't do that, we tell them they have to leave. If they don't leave, then they'll be charged with criminal trespass. It's a totally different category we'd be in.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure that it was...
Yeah, that's why that's, the reference to government let me refers to like the school district, the housing authority, any state or federal government in terms of, they're gonna have different rules, and, you know, we can't parcel or even know what those might be because their circumstances are very different. And they also, in section two, it allows businesses to do certain things. Like I went to the desk the other day, and if I require where they wear masks, and how am I gonna work on my teeth? They can't do that. And there's gonna be other circumstances where, if you go to the hairdresser, not that I do that, obviously, as you can see, there's no need for you to do that, but some people might have to take the mask off so that they can cut around the back of their hair. So there are all kinds of other businesses, we can't, you know, we can't possibly put in all the exceptions. And that's why we're giving latitude to businesses, under certain circumstances, it might be appropriate. If you go to the gym and you're working out and you're six feet away, there are a lot of people who want to wear masks, and that probably makes a whole lot of sense. For us to try to legislate every circumstance, I think we have to give our businesses quite a bit of leeway. And they, and all, like gyms have guidelines anyway, they have to follow from state, restaurants do as well. But again, there are so many different businesses out here. You could have construction workers that are doing heavy labor, and they have to be, they can't wear masks when they're doing it. But my first... But my friends over at our city hall, they're keeping people six feet apart when they do that. So again, we can't legislate all those. We have firefighters that have to put SCBA on. If they got to wear that mask and we legislate it, say you better wear this mask or you're going to have circumstances where they got to, they got to put their other SCBA on. Their, the plastic mask that they wear, they can't do both. We don't want to be fine firefighters for doing that. So you, that's why there's leeway that's allowed here for people to make those decisions.
Counselor Heistad, are you done, Counselor Zook? Yep, okay, Counselor Heistad.
Obviously, we are all floating in water that we didn't really bargain on. None of us expected to row a boat out across the pond and have a hole in it. But we're there with a hole in it. And I think our most basic responsibility is to each other and to the residents of Lebanon. It is our responsibility to make this town as safe as possible and to be able to provide a place for our people to go where they know that they can participate in our civic society and still feel safe while they're doing that. If we've come up with a situation where people are flaunting that, which I must say I have met, that is not a casual, I forgot to put my mask on, it's stick it in your nose. That kind of attitude isn't really being very conscientious about supporting and protecting your neighbors and your environment. And I have no problems at all with a $100 fine for somebody that tells you to go stick it in your nose. I'm not saying that there are a whole lot of situations where you can't do it. And there certainly are. And I think that we know that there's a lot of places that it isn't going to work. However, for those of us that have been sewing masks lately, you can do an awful lot at home if you want to sew them. And it's not an impossibility to do. So I feel that it's our civic responsibility to act in our best conscience of how can we make this town safer than what it is? And how do we keep it that way? I noticed in the Hanover ordinance, they require businesses to post a ordinance notice outside their building. And I would think that, in looking through hours, I don't see that, but I would think that that would be appropriate. So that each, each business could say it's posted right there. So I'm in favor of doing whatever we can do to make this town as safe as we can, have our kids go out and be able to go out and play and heavens to be seen. I would like to come out the other side of this thing and be able to watch grandchildren grow up and play. So let's do what we can to make it as safe as we can, get an ordinance that there that has enough teeth so that people believe it and say, these guys are serious. Because I think that we need to be serious. And we need to be serious that we want to have this a safe town. Please come and join us, but do it safely.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Sykes?
Yeah, so the mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor, to, I had some concerns about part two, but you've made clear to me why that's great language. Relative to the issue of fines, in my other role as chairman of the Transportation Committee in the legislature, we take up DMV law. And part of all of that is fines. And there's a direct cor, I don't have the statistics in front of me, but there's a direct correlation between the lower the fine in the front end yields more repeat offenders. And so they're more likely to say, you can go stick this ticket anywhere you'd like. I don't care if we don't have a, you know, the first, it should be rare, but when it is done, it should be, have the teeth necessary. So if anything, $100 is nowadays is a not that.
On the low side.
Yeah, on the low side. So I'm, I would not advocate changing that number at all.
What we're doing is talking about people's lives. Is it worth a hundred bucks? I think so.
Okay, any else, any other counselors like to speak who haven't spoken yet?
Yes, Counselor Hill, please.
Yes, Counselor Hill.
Thank you. And I, I just want to thank Counselor Prentice, Counselor Heistad, Counselor Sykes for your thoughtful remarks. I just will say that I echo your, your concern for the community and I am absolutely in favor of this. I would like to suggest as a comment that actually what I have heard from people and also from my own experience is that with regard to number five, the Mascoma Greenway in particular and the rail trail as well as sidewalks, pedestrian, public ways. Oh, and Counselor Zook as well. Thank you for your comments. Public recreational lands, I'm a little concerned that the language saying that it's strongly encouraged but not required, that doesn't strike me as being at least what would make me feel comfortable being outdoors. I think I would, I would support language to make that a requirement when you are within six feet of someone else. Because the sidewalks in Lebanon are not six feet wide. And so many people are taking the, you know, are using the practice of kind of walking. Someone will stay on the sidewalk, someone else will go onto the street into the shoulder. But there are some people who are not being thoughtful. And I think if we have language in here, certainly it's my hope that we will not have to have enforcement. But if, I think if we have language in here saying that you are required, if you are in public, that you are required to have a mask on your person at all times and that whenever you are within six feet of someone else who is not in your immediate, you know, quarantine family, that whether you're on the Mascoma Greenway, the Northern Rail Trail sidewalks or other pedestrian public ways or public recreational lands, that if you find yourself within six feet of someone else, that you are required to put on your face covering. That way, if people have questions, it will be crystal clear in the language and everyone will be able to enjoy the wonderful quality of life that we, that we have here and feel safe doing so. So I just would ask if we could consider strengthening provision number five.
Speaking of that, that just gets a little tricky and especially when you're in open areas. It's one thing when you're in closed areas where airflow is more of an issue. It gets real tricky to say, okay, this group is six people. Someone's going to have to say, how do I know that they're not associated with each other? That's going to get a little bit more tricky. We're talking immediate family members, extended family members, friends. It's going to get more complicated to try and enforce that. And that's why everybody else who's developed a similar type of ordinance provision has stuck to this type of language because of those concerns. So it's just going to get more difficult. But you have to articulate that more than what we've got in here. And then again, I suspect that's going to get quite a bit more tricky.
I thought that sidewalks and trails in downtown Hanover now require a face covering. So I would be in favor of just a strict requirement as opposed to making it strongly encouraged but not required. So if it's one or the other, I would prefer to err on the side of a strict, a strict protection.
Yeah.
Whiteboard, Counselor Zook?
I, I would agree about particularly like the rail trail and the sidewalks. I wonder though, I guess it's not really as much an issue on sidewalks because you're supposed to bicycle in the road anyway. But I wonder how municipalities who have a stricter interpretation are dealing with cyclists? Because you can kind of picture like crossing, you know, you're within six feet, but you're not really spending any time next to each other. And like, you put the mask back on, but you don't really want to, like, I'd be interested to hear how other municipalities are dealing with that.
Well, not, that's, that's my point. It's going to be a bit tricky to try to do that.
Counselor Roderick?
Yeah, I think it's important that we give the enforcement officers flexibility to use common sense in enforcing these rules. I agree that we should be wearing masks. They do what they're supposed to do. I've got mine right here. On the other hand, there are times when it just doesn't really work to have one on. So I, I'm not sure that the mandate to get it is going to make it that much easier to enforce.
If people are running on the rail trail and we tell them they're physical exercise that they're going to have to wear a mask if they ultimately are going to be within six feet of somebody at some point.
Yeah.
And if it's 90 degrees out, you better have that face mask on. That gets a little difficult to breathe. Just things to consider.
Yes, I would, would, I would want that, just to be clear. I, I do, that is what I want.
Okay. Counselor Prentice, then Heistad?
So I just want to circle back and close the discussion on, on fines. I appreciate Assistant Mayor Bilo and the manager explaining somewhat of the historical discussion. I don't disagree with having them. I just want to talk about how much they are. And it doesn't mean I take this any less seriously because I question whether it should be lower or higher. And I think that the logic, especially what Counselor Sykes offered, that, you know, the correlation between how serious somebody takes something related to how much they have to pay for it really lends itself to this. So I take this very seriously. We wouldn't be talking about it. But I do think it's fair to understand how we got here, especially should we be questioned. And I, I just wanted to know. Okay, so I'm good. Thanks.
Counselor Heistad?
Just thinking about wearing a mask. And there was some information on the Post article a few days ago about the fact that it's as if you are hiking at elevation. In other words, did you arrive in Denver at 6,000 feet and instead hiking up, you find that you're short on breath? I find going up, going uphill, wearing a mask to be a challenge. You won't find me running up Spring Street tomorrow with a mask on very easily. But I will wear a mask when I'm out. And I think that if we honor ourselves and our kids and our neighbors, we all need to do that.
I'd better not see you running up Spring Street by my house.
Go on, bye, Bruce.
If I can catch you. I, I'd like to speak, I, I'd like to move this forward as is. I think that the outdoor, when somebody's not approaching a business or approaching a building, it's, it's really tricky. You know, I try to take a mask with me when I take our dog for a walk. But quite honestly, I walk away from where most people are. So I, if I rarely see someone on the sidewalk, one of the other of us moves out and I'm walking on a street with very little traffic so that we stay more than six feet apart. I haven't run into that problem. Even walking downtown, I, I'm not passing people within six feet typically. Though I usually have a mask in my pocket just in case. But, but I think the enforcement issue becomes really difficult. And I think that this is where we're going to tend to get people rebelling if we're saying even when you're outdoors on a trail for a walk, you need to have, be wearing a mask if you come within six feet of anybody else. It's, I mean, I think it's common sense at this point that you should. And I think the language that's saying it's strongly encouraged, you know, it's, it's, there's going to be some pushback overall. I'm not sure we want to be the community that litigates that particular issue of, of masks being required outdoors. You know, a number, maybe Hanover's an exception. I think Hanover is limited to within certain districts. So it's like the downtown, I, I haven't read the ordinance, but I heard Julia talking about it earlier today. And she was saying that that limitation is only within certain areas, that that doesn't apply to all parts of the town. But most of the town doesn't require a mask when you're outdoors just walking. So it's certainly something we could amend if we see it's a problem. But I think just the fact that there's a general mask, most people aren't going to read the ordinance in detail. But they'll, they'll know that they're supposed to be wearing a mask when they're entering a building or a business or a workplace. And I think, you know, they'll, you know, businesses will be able to enforce it by saying there's an ordinance, you have to wear a mask. I just think it's, it's going to be much trickier to try to do this on a widespread basis outdoors. And, and I'd rather come back and revisit that if we're seeing a problem. That's one of you. Okay, Counselor Prentice, then Heistad?
Oh, I was going to make a motion, so.
I'm going to read the Hanover ordinance.
Do it.
Okay.
Number seven of the Hanover ordinance. Is this ordinance shall apply to the more densely settled areas of Hanover, corresponding with the Dartmouth D business, international residence and office, general residence, GR3 and GR4, general residence SR1, SR2, SR3, zoning districts. These districts are generally bounded on the west by Connecticut River and Ledyard Bridge, West Wheelock Street on the south of Lebanon, the Hanover-Lebanon Town Line, to the Great Hollow Road, north by Wilson's Landing on Route 10, Trumbull Field in Etna Village, in the east and eastern to the center of Etna Village. So there's a good section of Hanover that is being affected.
And what does the ordinance require in that area?
That's requiring a mask.
And for all activity?
You got it.
Wow. How are they enforcing it? Counselor Prentice?
I was actually going to ask a question. I'm willing to make a motion, but this is very weedy. How, what's this, like I've seen the signage in Hanover. What, do we have a plan for signage?
No, we're not, we have, other than putting it on display boards or go across our website. And we'll go out in manual fashion, I'm sure the newspaper will pick it up. But no, we're not requiring people post anything because I don't know what they would post. If they're going to post this, where are they going to post it? And that's an additional requirement on businesses. So I have no intention of doing that.
I'm talking about us. Are we going to, like, you went to Hanover now? I know there's still this other piece that we've got to settle, but you drive into any part of Hanover and there's like a red sign that says, you know, masks are, at that point, it was requested. Now, I'm sure they'll flip the language on it, but it's very, it's, it's not about what the businesses post. And I think one important piece that a number of people said tonight is that we're really backing up our businesses too. Like this is a full community approach. Because some of them felt, you know, that they were like out there when they were asking people to do this. So it's, we're doing, it's all around. All right. So I think we have an, I, I think we have an obligation to put some type of signage up. I think that it's smart and proactive and tell people what's expected. Because again, people come here from all over, you know, and are they all going to know that we have this ordinance? So that's more of an operational weedy thing. I'll let it go. I just wanted to bring it up. And when the time is right, I'm happy to make a motion. It sounds like we don't have this settled on whether we're wearing masks, like the Hanover ordinance language, you know, even when we're running and, you know, in a majority of, you know, like say on the rail, on the Mascoma Greenway or not. Is that still up for discussion?
The whole thing's up for discussion.
Yeah, I know. That's true. Sorry. So I'm, I don't know what the answer is.
Counselor Heistad?
Number five for the Hanover District is, members of the public must wear a face mask while using public sidewalks, other pedestrian ways, public recreation areas and other public property within the town of Hanover, wherever maintaining adequate social, physical distancing is not possible due to pedestrian congestion.
But it doesn't define adequate social distancing?
I will look for it. Within six feet.
Anyone or non-family members, non-household members?
I don't think it does specify household members. And I think it just makes it a requirement when you're within six feet and you can't social distance. And I think that's fine. I support very strongly that if we're going to have a mask ordinance in place, that we should make it clear that, the whole point about this is, is to remind people of the common courtesy. courtesy that we're, that we are owed to our, to our neighbors. And, you know, I'm, I'm happy that there are people who want to go running for exercise when it's ninety degrees out, but I don't think that their personal choice to engage in that kind of an activity should infringe on my ability to also engage in my fitness activity in, uh, in the great outdoors, or anyone else in Lebanon. I think we all should have access to, um, public spaces, and sidewalks, the rail trail, the greenway, those are public spaces. And if we're going to allow certain people to not have masks, but other, and to, and to be within the, what is recognized widely by the CDC and others as the safe social distance, then that means that certain people are being prioritized over others, and I don't think that's fair. So I really strongly, I just wanna, I just wanna fight for moving to something that really protects people when they're in public spaces. That's what we're responsible for. What people choose to do on their own property, you know, that, if, I, I, you know, I have no opinion about that, uh, but it's when we're on public property, um, and when there's public activity taking place, I think we owe it to the community. I think it was Counselor Highstead who was really talking about this earlier, about the, the duty and the responsibility that we owe to look out for the, the health of others. So I, I really am much more comfortable with a strict requirement when it comes to public spaces like sidewalks, the rail trail, and the greenway.
Counselor Highstead.
We all bristle when it comes to thinking about somebody else who's telling us what to do, but this is not exactly new territory. When I was a kid, we used to have contagious diseases went by, and lo and behold, you are confined inside your house. And I remember asking my mother in the kitchen right below me, who is that woman? She said, that's the health officer, and the paper that she puts up says you can't go outside the house for two weeks. And lo and behold, we were not allowed outside the house on our own property when I lived in this very house. It's not that long ago, it's only eighty years. So anyhow, it has happened in Lebanon before, and people bristled about it, and yes, we were told we couldn't go out of the house because we were quarantined. It had a nice pink, Earl Jeter remembers the fact that he was upset because he couldn't go out and get the newspaper off the, the porch anymore and thank the newspaper man.
Counselor Prentice.
I think that we're in a better position to be strict, as strict as possible than not. Um, and we can, we could dial back at a time, may, no, actually, let's just, let's take this to the highest level that we can go, um, and that's that. And nobody will be going around putting paint on anybody's house, but.
Counselor Rar, I'd just like to remind everyone, this is just the first blush.
Yep, that's true.
We're going to have a public hearing next week.
Just something to think about, though, is one of the provisions that's in here, it says that, emergency management director and health officer discuss this matter in detail, I recommend the following ordinance. If you change that, you should change it now and see if they concur. If they don't concur, you gotta remove that. And if they don't concur, you remove that, one of the strongest statutory provisions is the health officer making regulations that get approved by the council in RSA 147-1. That is the strongest teeth that you have in, in ordinance, the closest thing that comes to giving you authority to do this. So you just need to keep that in mind, so if you gotta change it, my recommendation, if you make that change now, otherwise we'll, this will have to not be on a public hearing for the twelfth, until you come up with whatever languages you're proposing to the public, and then see if the health officer and emergency management director concur.
In response to that, I do not oppose a change. Pardon me, I didn't understand that, Counselor Rar. In, in response to what the manager just said, I'm not opposed to us changing this tonight. We're not opposed to us changing-
You're making it more stringent.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Prentice?
And, so, sorry, my last thing is, page one twelve, uh, we have in here, um, this is in the, uh, you know, it's, it's in the ordinance, all the whereas, 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 and it says, whereas in September twenty twenty, more than two thousand Dartmouth College students are expected to return to the upper validity resume class, traveling to the region from across the United States and countries around the world. Do, I think the language should be there that, that, you know, that, you know, whereas Lebanon serves as a regional hub where thousands of people are, you know, come and, and work, you know, visit our city for business and for pleasure on a daily basis. I don't, I, I guess I'm not so comfortable signaling, signaling out just Dartmouth College students here.
Since we're signaling them out, it exemplifies the case that we have one particular acute situation that's coming before us very quickly, that brings in people from all over the world and across the United States, and we know from what we're seeing from data from CDC that it's spread across the United States and across the world, it helps to make that argument. This is going to be challenged in the court, I guarantee you, that this will be a class action, uh, litigation that's going on, and we're gonna have to defend every piece of this to the help, and to the extent that ours is different than others, and ours is different than others, because they're all, I've looked at all of them, and we've taken bits and pieces of what other communities have had, um, and we've included some of those things, and others we have not included, because they may not be applicable to us. Just, just keep that in mind, this is going to be challenged, and we're gonna have to make the case why we're doing what we're doing.
So, so I think the point is, um, we could add another whereas, and just observe the fact that we're a regional hub, we have four and a half interstate interchanges in our community, um, that, that, and a lot of services that draw people off the highway who are interstate travelers, um, for services in our community, but it's just, in addition-
You could add that to that, probably that one right there.
Yeah, we could add another whereas, or add that right to, to the college one, just the fact that, um, I think that, that would be fine. I, I think we want to rewrite five, so it applies, um, if three of five is rewritten, so it applies whenever you're on a public way, um, and, and there's a high likelihood of coming within, or you coming within a distance of six feet of others who are not members of your household, then I think we should draft that language tonight and, and perhaps hold off on setting the public hearing, maybe having a special counseling next Wednesday, so that you can review to make sure that that would still, still be something that we could say is supported by the health officer, um, and emergency management director, um, because it is true, and I, I did look at the statutes that, and, and I think the legal opinion reflects this, you know, that this makes sense, but there's not, you know, there's not real strong statutory authority for us to do this, and towns only have the authority that the legislature grants us, but one of the key angles is if it's the public health officer recommending the measure, um, so I don't know, um.
What?
Uh, okay, you've got several hands up, Counselor Sykes, then Highstead, then Prentice.
And then Hill.
And if Counselor Hill or Winnie or Zoe want to say something, just jump in, and I'll be happy to recognize you.
Just put me on the list, please.
Okay, Counselor Hill.
So, was I recognized, Assistant Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I was going to make a suggestion that for number five, um, and you, I'm not the best wordsmith in the world, but let me just run this by everybody, that members of the public utilizing the Mascoma Greenway and the Northern Rail Trail, sidewalks and other pedestrian public ways, or public recreational lands are required to wear a face covering when social distancing of at least six feet is not possible. End of story. So, you're walking down the sidewalk, you're not near anybody, you don't have to have it on, but when you come to a point where you have to be, you know, I, I just think that the, that extra level of protection is important. I, I understand there's a bit of an issue with, um, bicyclists and so on, how are you gonna work that? But I think this, this puts the onus of wearing the mask, it gives people the choice to not come within six feet. If they can't, they have to come within six feet, then they should wear a mask. I don't know.
Okay, uh, I think I said Counselor Highstead next, and then we'll go to Counselor Hill.
It's a concern about having Dartmouth listed up there, and to me, having spent thirty-nine years at Dartmouth, you get into certain cycles, and those cycles always have to do when students come back on campus. And whether it was semesters and it was twice a year, or when we went into quarters, it was four times a year, every time students came back to campus, there'd be three weeks of everybody getting sick, then you gradually work your way back out of it, and the last six weeks, you'd all be well again. But things do get transmitted, and we do have a student population that comes from around the world, and, uh, we are more vulnerable than living in some other areas that aren't.
Okay, Counselor Hill.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I, I want to support, um, I, I understand what Counselor Highstead said, and, and I definitely am aware of how communicable diseases spread very quickly on campus. That being said, I want to, um, support what Counselor Prentice said earlier about focusing our ordinance on the, on our particular status as a regional hub. We are not the town, that we're not the city that hosts the college specifically, and we, while we do have graduate students who live in Lebanon, we do not have a large number of undergraduate students who live in Lebanon, um, and that is more particularly a Hanover issue. That being said, um, I believe that Hanover actually removed the specific reference to Dartmouth students from their ordinance, um, and, and so as to not single them out, as Counselor Prentice was talking about, I think it also makes sense for us in our ordinance to, to, um, underscore the status of Lebanon as a regional hub. Assistant Mayor Belo talked about the highway interchanges. We also have, um, and I forget the exact number of hotel rooms, um, that we could put in that particular whereas, um, and so I think that would be, um, I think that removing the reference to Dartmouth students would actually, um, minimize a certain kind of legal exposure, and I think that underscoring and emphasizing our status as a regional hub would, in, would, um, would, would strengthen our legal case, uh, if this is challenged. And I would support the language that Counselor Sykes just discussed, if he were to offer that as an amendment, I would support that wholeheartedly, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
So I can offer the amendment when it's time, because we can, I, I guess I need a process question. I heard, um, Assistant Mayor Belo suggest that we put this off, but if we were to put this off until next week, whether to have, when to have the public hearing, does that give us the opportunity to make adjustments less formally than motions, or do you need motions tonight?
If you're gonna make changes with what we post to the public to look at for the public hearing, should be substantially what we're gonna be making, what's gonna be voted on, yes or no. If you're gonna make major changes at the public hearing, you should republish that again, because there are people who may look at what you've got posted and say, okay, I'm not concerned about that. Then you make a major change, it affects them, and they have insurance to weigh in on that, that's gonna be a potential problem that you're gonna have, that's, you just have to think about that.
So, I guess that wasn't clear to me, so I, I can make an amendment motion right now, if that's helpful. And I, I've written it down, so hopefully I get it the same way as the last time I suggested it, if that's important.
Okay, well, wait a second, that's a little strange, you don't have a, a main motion before us, so it's not really, I guess you could move to amend the proposed text right now.
Yes.
So then that can be a standalone motion, yes, okay.
Okay. So, what, I guess what I'm hearing then is, I would move to, to amend the proposed text as provided in the counselor, counsel's packet for item number five, to read, members of the public utilizing the Mascoma Greenway and the Northern Rail Trail, sidewalks, and other pedestrian public ways, or public recreational lands, shall wear a face covering when social distancing of at least six feet is not possible. That's the motion.
Okay, there's a motion.
Uh, seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Hill. I, I guess the question I have is, social distancing of six feet from other persons who are not members of the same household, something like that, because if there's a couple walking down the street together, they're not socially distancing, but they live in the same household, they would be in violation of the ordinance if we just say social distancing from other persons.
Assistant Mayor Belo, who is going to bring that action against the city?
I, I fundamentally don't believe we should enact laws that put citizens who are doing common sense things in violation of the law, and say, well, we're not gonna enforce it because it's obviously dumb to enforce it. We shouldn't write the law in a way that creates a situation where people are in violation when, when they all agree they shouldn't be. If, if a couple who sleep in the same bed at night are walking down the sidewalk together, we should not have the language that says they're violating an ordinance because they're not six feet apart from each other.
They could be pushing a carriage down the road.
Or carrying a baby.
Who would have standing to bring that action against the city, Cliff?
Oh, I, I have-
Somebody could be in charge, you know, they could be ticketed for that.
How about, Cliff, how about this? All the language that I had, but when I got to the, shall wear a face covering when social distancing, um, shall wear a face covering when, um, when social distancing of at least six feet is not possible from persons that they encounter while using those public ways.
Oh.
If they're walking along with family members, it doesn't apply. But if they wa, they come up on somebody-
With non, just having to non-family members.
I, I don't see that we need to get into that, but.
Trying to be too specific here.
Yeah, that's what, that's why, that's what I was trying to avoid, the whole family-
To define family?
Well, household, I, I mean, I think it's, in the governor's executive order sort of recognizes, you know, people who are members of the same household are different.
I, I don't think we want to, well, anyway.
Look, if Zoe and I are walking on the sidewalk together, mother and daughter, we have no problem wearing a mask. I just don't understand why this is a problem.
Okay, just, just for me, I can't support language that puts, in which we're gonna say, we're, we're, we're gonna enforce it against some situations but not others because we, we have some discretion which is not expressed in the ordinance. I just think that's really bad way to legislate, to say that we're, we're gonna use discretion that is not expressed in the language of, of the law.
So how about a sentence that adds discretion?
Family members.
I think house, household is the term, you know, if you're in the same household, you don't have to socially distance, just like if you're in the same household, you can eat at a restaurant at a table together.
Household is definitely a better language choice.
I, I just think if we spend a couple minutes, we can figure out how to say it with only a couple of words.
Yeah. So, Cliff, I would, I would be, except a person who's seconded would need to, I would be amenable to adding that phrase, house, you know, some portion of household, however you see fit, to my motion. What I, you know, I, I, I think, but again, I'll use my other- What I, you know, I I think, but again, I'll use my other roles. In the Red Cross, we used to talk about families all the time when giving out assistance. We no longer talk about families, we talk about households. Because you can't, no one can define what a family is nowadays. So I I like the idea of household.
Um, I think you could say it was social distancing of at least six feet from non-household members.
Fair enough. I, that's good. I like it.
Just from non-household members?
Sure. I'd accept that change.
Anybody who's not from your household, if you can't maintain six feet distance, you should have a mask on.
I would accept that language change. I presume thy second would as well.
Yeah, fine.
That would make sense in the non-outdoor applicable, um, sections of this too. I think if you happen to work with somebody who lives in a house with you, for example, it doesn't make super sense for the police to be ticketing that. That makes, that makes really good sense.
I think we better just deal with one amendment at a time.
So just to clarify, Counselor Hill, did you accept that amendment?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. I apologize. I'm just very passionate about this topic.
I appreciate the passion.
Would you mind restating the total motion, please?
Sure, I'll give it a go. Watch me carefully, Cliff. Oh, boy. Okay. Um, do I have, let's see, so I would say Counsel Sykes offers the following amendment to.
The proposed text.
The proposed, thank you, Cliff, proposed text, provided in the council packet, um, specific to item number five, which shall read, "Members of the public utilizing the Masoma Greenway and the Northern Rail Trail sidewalks and other pedestrian public ways shall wear a face covering when social distancing of at least six feet is not possible." Well, where where did the household fit in there, Cliff?
Um, right after six feet. When social distancing of at least six feet from non-household members is.
Not possible.
Is not possible.
Hopefully that helped the clerk.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second to the revised amendment?
Uh, yeah, Counselor Hill will resecond the re-read motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just one subtle observation, th- this time you left out the word or or public recreational lands.
Oh, I didn't intend to, that should be in there.
Okay.
Did I, I'm getting tired, Cliff.
Yeah, so ju- just to reiterate, the first part would read, "Members of the public utilizing the Masoma Greenway, comma, the Northern Rail Trail, comma, sidewalks and other pedestrian ways, comma, or public recreational lands are required to wear a face mask, a face covering when social distancing from non-household members of at least six feet. Um, when when social distancing of at least six, of at least six feet from non-household members is not possible."
Right, and you left out public the second time, but.
Yeah, yeah, I got, I'm sorry. I I only partially restated that portion.
I suspect this is going to come back to us, Mr. Mayor, in a different format when we announce the public hearing with this correction.
Um, that's, yes.
Yeah.
So what we'll do is, right, so we'll post the changes if some of this motion passes, we'll go post the changes that you've made. So that way the public knows what they're commenting on at the public hearing.
Very good. So I I think you must, you must be able to get what you need out of this discussion if this amendment passes.
Okay, a further discussion on this amendment. Senior General, call the roll.
Okay, Assistant Mayor Belo.
Yes.
Counselor Broner.
Broner, I'm saying, I don't like the language.
Uh, Counselor Heistet.
Counselor Heistet, aye.
Counselor Hill.
Hill is yes.
Counsel Prentice.
Yes.
Counsel Sykes.
Uh, Counsel Sykes is yes.
Counselor Winnie.
Counselor Winnie votes aye.
And Counselor Zook.
Zook votes yes.
Okay, so it passes, um, seven, yes, and one extension.
I I haven't suggested we're at additional whereas, um, which would be whereas the city of Lebanon serves as a regional retail commercial in service of multiple interstate animal changes. And and I would suggest inserting that ahead of the Dartmouth College reference. I'm I'm not quite sure, I'm interested in hearing more from Counsel Hill, why she thinks that would be, would not strengthen our legal arguments. I mean, it's true, it's the next town over, but the fact is, um, there's, that is something we can point to that increases the risk from people who work in Hanover who are going to interact with college students but live in Lebanon, for instance, or college students who come to Lebanon to do shopping, which they do. Um, I just think it's an additional risk factor that helps justify this measure. So so I would rather see the college students stay in, but add some, an additional whereas about the regional hub. Counsel Prentice?
I'm I'm going to suggest, let me just read some language that I think could serve what you, oh, did the screen just fright, freeze up?
No.
All right, um, what, uh, Assistant Mayor Belo, what you were talking about, not as, not as eloquent that I think could cover all of this. So Lebanon, so whereas Lebanon serves as a regional hub visited by thousands on a daily basis, traveling from other areas of the state, nation, and internationally. And I think that that covers all of it, and we're not singling out one particular group. Because the truth is, there could be people that are coming into this, into our own city to go up to one of the, you know, high-tech businesses that's coming, coming in internationally or from another part of the nation as well. I know we have more of a a volume in Hanover, but where within their own town and their own ordinance, they're not going to single the Dartmouth College students out. I don't think we should, but I think that we should say, look, people are coming here from all over the world. Regardless, that's the real issue, and we are a regional hub. So I wanted to take it in that direction.
Time for me. Um, other comments?
Yeah, I like that Counsel Prentice's suggestion.
So you could make that a motion to substitute the the whereas about the college students with with this alternative language. Go ahead, Counsel Prentice.
So I'd like to make a motion, and it'll be, I think it's, it's on page one twelve, and it's the eighth, whereas down. So it'll say, whereas Lebanon serves as a regional hub visited by thousands on a daily basis, traveling from other areas of the state, nation, and internationally, comma, and no, semicolon, and.
There a second to that motion? Counselor Sykes, that seconded? So that's striking the other language you didn't say that. We're striking the other language that's there, just to be clear. Counsel Prentice?
Um, would that, so do I need to state it or make it part of my motion? So I think I need to, um, maybe.
I just need to know, because what I'll do is I'll strike the language, and then we'll have what we're going to present. So that's what I'm making sure, that's what you want me to do.
Yes, that is what I want.
That is what I want.
Okay. Further discussion on that motion? Senior General?
Somebody explain what the vulnerability is of having Dartmouth listed in there.
It's the strongest argument that we have, quite frankly. Because we we can, we can clearly define, we have this number of people. I can't tell you how many byos that, we have to prove this. When they say you've got thousands of people, okay, Assistant Mayor Mahal, how are you going to prove that? Where I can prove that we are going to have two thousand students because we have the enrollment there to be able to make that argument. It's one of the strongest arguments I would suggest that we have. And I will go on record in the meeting, the public hearing, to suggest that you not strike that. It'll be up to you what you choose to do, but I'm trying to help you defend your arguments in front of the court, which inevitably will come. And this is the strongest argument I would suggest that you do have. And again, you can do that whatever you choose to. But I'm going to go on the record to tell you that, because I'm trying to help you. I I have to defend this at the end of the day.
Yeah, this is Counsel Hill.
Well, um, I think Counsel Prentice and Hill would like to speak, is that correct?
I'll let, I'll kind of yield to the, uh, the young lady from Messenger Street.
Yes, no, so yeah.
Thank you. Um, you know, I I think that the city manager is making an excellent point. Um, and I think that Counsel Prentice's language allows us to make that argument. Counsel Prentice's language is more expansive than simply singling out Dartmouth students. There is always a legal risk when you single out any particular group or class of people. And so rather than restricting this, uh, legal argument to a specific class or group of people, what Counsel Prentice's language does is it actually expands, uh, this particular part of the resolution and actually allows us to argue not just that the two thousand Dartmouth students who are going to be here and are known and anticipated, but also allows us to add in other risk factors that we are aware of in the city. And so I agree with Counsel, with, uh, City Manager Mulholland. See, I almost gave you a raise to city council. Uh, but I agree with the city manager. And I also think that Counsel Prentice's language actually underscores what the city manager is saying and strengthens our ability to, um, further bolster that argument.
Um, Counsel Prentice?
We're, I just, we're good. What what Counsel Hill said is, covers the whole thing.
Um, I I still think it would be better to make this an additional whereas and keep the one that's here. It's it's stating a fact. It's not trying to treat college students as a different class. It's just stating a factually true statement that that supports the enactment of the ordinance. And and I think the manager's correct. We're going to be in court defending this, and the stronger we can make it, the better. So I I'd rather see this as an additional whereas. Right after the one with Dartmouth. Yeah, or either before or after.
So I would.
That's an easy answer.
So now, so now I will say something. Um, I think that, I think that if you leave, I actually, I mean, I I think that you leave it in there. You also, I I don't understand, if you leave this in there, that's singling out a group of people. I think that there's, there's a legal risk to that. Um, there could potentially be this legal risk to saying, well, the Dartmouth students are coming, and they pose this big threat. The truth is that anybody coming from anywhere, and there are people coming into this, into the city every day from all over the, well, I wouldn't say every day from all over the world, but enough during the the week, that that's the, that's the real issue. And if the town of Hanover, if I understand this correctly, didn't even include it in their ordinance, and they're in Hanover, what's the, what's the battle here? But I will say this, if it's going to get us through tonight, I don't want to delay a public hearing because this is a timely issue. If it's going to get us through tonight, um, and we leave this as, say, a second, you know, we leave this in here, and we have that second regional hub language, then there's nothing to say that we, you know, that I can't retake up this argument in the public hearing. Um, and it may, it may come out. I mean, at that point, you know, I don't want to hold this up anymore, but I think that we're, we're wrong. Yeah, yes, so they're coming back, but so is everybody else. You know, so we're coming in and out of this stick, this area all the time. So I'm just really conflicted in why if Hanover didn't do it, why we're spinning our wheels, singling out a group of people where we know this could apply to anybody.
Counsel Heistet?
It certainly does stand that you could apply to anybody. However, for thirty nine years, I watched every damn term. There's a new disease, a new thing comes in, and it's from Kiel, it's from Moscow, it's from Singapore, the entire world, those kids are everywhere. There's a program, you name it, and they're there. And they come back with it, and they're sick with it. And my staff would get sick, I had fifteen teaching assistants. I'd be down to two or three out of the fifteen because they're sick. And then two weeks later, they're coming back in again. But they all get it. We're not dealing with Joe Schmo coming from Akron, Ohio.
I didn't say.
The one thing I would observe is there have been in recent, because some colleges have already started going back, I don't know why, in some school districts. But there are multiple press reports of new outbreaks where college students have reconvened on campuses and or fraternities and or schools reopening. It it's just a, it's just a fact of this pandemic that bringing students back together to a campus that's previously been closed is evidencing new outbreaks across the country. So I just think it's a factual thing that supports the need for this ordinance. So I'll leave it at that. And and I would also observe, if we leave it in for now, just taking out a whereas, it's not a big deal at the public hearing. Whereas adding something in is more problematic, that wasn't noticed. Counselor Prentice?
And I will, and I'm going to stop at this point. I'm not talking, I I specifically added language in here, Counsel Heistet, that talks about the internet, not just the state or nation, but internationally. I'm not talking about Joblo from Akron, Ohio, I'm talking about everybody. So that's, that's the purpose. But I'm, I'm done for the night with this. I think that we can move along, and we can, you know, we can further discuss this and take it up at the, you know, at the public hearing. But that's, that, I just think we have to be cautious here. And we can get what we want from protecting the public and speaking to all the populations who could possibly cross our borders. But just remember, the town where this school is, they didn't take this stance, they took it for everybody. You know, like just said, across the board, so. That's all. And, yeah. Where's the dog? It's time for the city manager's report, she always comes with.
We've got a lot of public to do too, so we've got quite a bit to do. This should be clear, yeah, the motion we have in front of you right now strikes this language out. It's not in there any longer, it has some new language. So I need some further direction as to what I'm doing here, what I'm posting to the public. Counsel Prentice?
So procedurally, Assistant Mayor, if I, I still want to make the motion, but if I withdraw, can I, how do I withdraw the striking and just adding this language? And then we can deal with whether it's going to say Dartmouth College or not at the public hearing? What's the best way to do this?
You made a motion which could add basically a new whereas section, which, well, we, I've got that in there, we'll, we'll take that word for word, we might listen to it again. You have not taken a specific action to strike this whereas statement. You have not done, so it'll just, because I, that's why I asked that question. Uh, is the intent to remove that, because that's what I'll do. If you tell me the intent is not to remove that, we'll just leave it as it is.
I didn't make that motion tonight, we know what what the discussion has been. We're going to add the, I'd like to keep the motion to add this language, and then we'll take it back up in the public hearing.
So we're going to leave the the whereas statement, reference Dartmouth College as it is for now, is that correct?
Correct, and we're adding the whereas Lebanon serves as a regional hub visited by thousands on a daily basis, traveling from other areas of the state, nation, and internationally.
Okay, um, senior, further discussion, uh, we'll call the roll.
So if I were to second, I'll second it.
I think Counsel Hill will second it, no, wait.
You already seconded it, oh, no, he didn't second.
You already seconded it. Oh, you're reaffirming your seconding. Right? Makes it third. Counsel Sykes, you're reaffirming your second of that motion.
That's what I was trying to clarify for the record.
Okay.
Thank you, Richard.
And the motion is simply to add an additional whereas? And the motion is simply to add an additional whereas clause as stated. Okay. Mrs. Kinnison, would you call the roll?
Gladly. Assistant Mayor Beal?
Beal votes yes.
Counselor Rauner?
Rauner votes yes.
Counselor Heist?
Counselor Heist votes aye.
Counsel Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Counsel Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Counsel Sykes?
Counsel votes Sykes yes. Yeah, I got that backwards. I said I'm tired.
We need to go where you were going. Counsel Winnie?
Votes yes.
Counsel Winnie votes aye.
And Counsel Zook?
Counsel Zook votes yes.
All right, passes eight to zero.
Okay, now what do we do about setting the public hearing? You had a concern about wanting to run the revised five past the emergency meeting. We have different...
Hello, I just have a point of order, please.
Yes, okay. Counsel Hill?
9:51. I just would like to make a motion that we extend the meeting until 10:30.
Okay. I think that motions and orders are second to do that. Counsel Prentice seconds the motion? Okay. We can call the roll on that.
Assistant Mayor Beal?
Beal votes yes.
Counsel Rauner?
Rauner votes yes.
Counsel Heist?
Counsel Heist votes yes.
Counsel Hill? Counsel Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Counsel Sykes?
Counsel Sykes votes yes.
Counsel Winnie?
Counsel Winnie votes aye.
And Counsel Zook?
Zook votes yes.
Okay, we are extending. We don't have to go all the way to 10:30 though. Okay, so the question is, what for the manager?
So I should go with my report next and then we can do it in front of the public and adjourn by after the public?
Wait, we haven't voted to set up a public hearing.
Well, then you're going to do that next.
Yeah, what I'm asking is, are you comfortable with us setting the public hearing without checking with the emergency management director and the public health officer about the record pending the...
I will do that. The only thing is you may have to remove that if they disagree. Obviously, they're not here, so I don't know what their position is going to be on the changes that are there.
Okay.
So that's the only thing you'd have to consider. If they said no, that could be a significant issue you're going to have to address in terms of legality of it.
Okay.
Hopefully, that's not the case. Have that issue, but...
Okay.
Possibly.
They might be able to live with the revised number five.
Right.
And support it. Okay. Counsel Rauner has a motion.
Welcome to the Lebanon City Council. Here we have scheduled a public hearing for Wednesday, August 12, 2020, beginning at 7:00 p.m. through Mofia Microsoft Teams for the purpose of receiving public input and taking action on proposed ordinance number 2020-11. An emergency ordinance requiring persons wear face masks under certain circumstances.
Okay, seconded by Counsel Heist. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Assistant Mayor Beal?
Beal votes yes.
Counsel Rauner? Counsel Heist?
Counsel Heist votes yes.
Counsel Hill?
Counselor Hill votes yes.
Counsel Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Counsel Sykes?
Counsel Sykes votes yes.
Counsel Winnie?
Counsel Winnie votes aye.
And Counsel Zook?
Zook votes yes.
All right, eight to zero. Passes.
Okay, moving on to city manager reports.
All right, I sent out notice on 3/7 on Main Street filing that building has been demolished and we will be recouping our legal costs to clean. But we didn't have to pay for the property. I took care of that, so we'll do it. So let's save this money that we had to spend there and the neighbors seem pretty happy with that building being removed. Fortunately, they go through court process to do it, but nonetheless, it's now an issue. City renovation status, work continues. There was a brief shutdown because of COVID-19. We had positive tests over there, but they're back working again. We expect to move into the building the week of November 9th, 13th. They've got holiday in 2020, Veterans Day. And then we expect the operation of the building November 16th, provided we don't have any more COVID-19 shutdowns or any other disruptions that cause that particular issue. PFOA standards have been signed into law by the governor. And also that includes a $50,000 revolving fund for low interest loans for entities to be used to deal with COVID-19 issues, mitigation, that sort of thing. The toughest standards in the country now with those standards that are put into place. And how we're going to deal with that remains to be seen, obviously. And the technology to actually get to those levels is going to be a challenge. So it's something we're definitely going to have to face in light of what we know we have in our sludge as well as our landfill. Electric vehicle charging station, Electrify America has been drawn from the lease agreement that we have for building an electric vehicle charging station. Apparently, they had quite a few difficulties with answering DOT and getting the documents they need and approvals they need to do certain things within that right away. So that's unfortunate, but that is the situation with that. I'd like to set up, if the council is interested, in a tour of the city hall on the 19th of August at 6:00 p.m. If any of you are interested in doing that, we can give you a tour with the construction company folks so you can see where we're at in terms of renovation of the building. Some of you may not be available for that. Certainly, if there is an interest in doing that, I can coordinate that. And we would have the people there to do that, to give you that tour and, of course, key elements and that sort of thing, do that.
So that would be right before the city council meeting on the 9th.
It would be, yes. That's why I thought it might be convenient to do it at that particular time.
I guess the question, can I kind of see us show hands or a voice if there's interest in doing that? I'm interested in it.
Yeah, I'm interested too.
We're interested.
Okay.
I am.
Couple others.
Hey, James.
I'm just going to plan whoever shows up. The requirements are that you do have to wear a helmet. You do have to have a face mask when you're in a building and there's a temperature check requirement as well. So you might as well maybe that we work right now, but that'll be the requirement going in there. We will provide you with helmets. I don't expect you to have those, but face masks you will need. And there's a questionnaire that we have on one of our sites that we do with our employees right now. They have the same requirements at the construction site. And again, face mask is required. So what you will do is you go to the second floor entrance that you didn't normally familiar with, but you would go in the clerk's office. Just walk in there, the door will be open, and I will meet you inside of there, give you further instructions, and we will give you a big tour of the building. And then you're going to have to go back home to jump on a meeting at 7:00.
Just wanted to add, because I get yelled at when I'm in there, get both the balls. No clothes, or you have to wear clothes, no shoes, no boots, socks don't count. No sandals. You have to wear sneakers or whatever. It's a little yucky.
You're such a fun killer, you are.
I know, I really am.
I know, that's true.
I got shoes without a hole in the top for a change.
So I'll arrange that. Again, for some reason, people can't make it that fine. And I could certainly arrange other dates if you have conflict and we can't do it. That's why we'll do that, facilitate that, and give you a draw. All right, town's own issue, I sent some emails out on that. I just, when we did this, obviously, I can't read the minds of councillors. The motion said translucent material, translucent glass. But I got the impression that really it would be the goal was to be able to look through the glass and see what's going on down below. The big specs were designed for the translucent glass because that was the motion made by the mayor and approved by the council. So I put things on a whole just to make sure that my hunch, my assumption was correct that they really wanted to see transparent glass that you could see through. I just want to have that discussion. I've already told our folks, I'm pretty sure that's what they want. That's really what they meant. It's not going in that direction, but I just need confirmation as to what we want to do with that.
I certainly want transparent.
Same.
I want transparent. And Counsel Hill, you had a comment previously?
Well, I'm just a little befuddled about this, quite honestly. I thought that in all of our discussions, we were very clear that we were actually debating, or some of the discussions were about whether it should be open to the, you know, open to the sky or whether it should just be clear. The discussion was never whether it should be, you know, a window or something opaque. The intention was always to be able to see down below. So I'm really glad that the manager caught this because I think that it would have been a very disappointing surprise to, you know, unveil the tunnel project with, you know, with translucent glass as opposed to transparent glass. So I, yes, I believe that the council's intention was for this to be absolutely transparent and somehow there was just a, somehow there was a miscommunication.
Well, it was embedded in the motion, unfortunately, but that was inadvertent, I think. So you want translucent or transparent?
Counsel Hill, that was a question I think that Counsel Rauner was asking you. I think she wants transparent.
Transparent everything. Transparent government and transparent glass at the mall.
Okay, Counsel Prentice?
I actually just wanted to ask you about the electric vehicle charging station, not about this. So I can wait my turn, just get my hand up.
Okay, I think you've got a sense.
Yeah, so I'm just going to keep moving forward, having them make sure it's spec for transparent glass. Glass that you can clearly look down and see, or look up for that matter, and see other human beings that would be there and clearly discern what is above or what is below. I think it pretty well articulates it.
Right.
I think that's what you want, and that is what I will make sure happens.
Okay. Now, Counsel Prentice's question about the EV charging.
So they're not going to put that one charging station in because of DOT, DMV? Is that what I heard?
DOT, Rail Bureau was terribly non-responsive. They kept saying, oh, COVID-19, we can't help you. And basically, they said you can't run new power lines over the right of way, even though there are six crisscrossings of the power lines and all sorts of communication lines over that old right of way in the immediate vicinity of downtown. But they, but literally wanted to run from a pole to, you know, across the right of way. Actually, they wanted to go down and underground their conduit. And DOT wouldn't sign off on it and they wouldn't even, they kind of said, well, we think we own all that land that the city parking space is on and we don't know why, anything about it. So they basically were obstructionist and we're really happy to hear that EV, I mean, Electrify America had withdrawn the lease because they didn't have to deal with it. I'm expressing a bit of frustration here.
I'm glad you are because I'm, thank you for the clarification. It frustrates me as well. There's got, and I know, what recourse do we have? I mean, this is a step in the right direction. I don't think we should give up on it and I don't think we should let them force us to give up on it. What the heck?
It's not a matter of us giving up on it. EA's got to make a decision and move on. It's like, hey, look, you know, when this is too complicated, we can't move forward. We'll go to Walmart someplace with people we can work with. And it's not that they can't work with us. It's just, you've got bureaucracy that's very challenging to penetrate, I can tell you right now. So it's not like...
I'm not blaming, I'm not saying that it's the city, so please forgive me. I just, being like, you know, at Panera Bread, you know, why can't they be on city property? So we've got to figure something else out and maybe there's another company that we can bring into the picture. But we should move forward in this direction and we should be in contact, as we have before, with, you know, with state government, with Commissioner, what's it, Shaheen? Sheen or... George, we did, this, it's just not, it's just not acceptable. It's late. Okay, Cliff, I'm frustrated too and I'm going to follow up on it. I'll call you. Or I'll call, I'll call the city manager. All right.
Well, the manager has given directions to TAD to go ahead and do our own right to know request because that's part of what they were blowing off Electrify America. They were not responding to a right to know request. And they have, I don't think the governor suspended the right to know.
He has not.
So, you know, they were just blowing them off. And I was in part of the call where they kind of debriefed on this. Electrify America was quite clear that they're not going to proceed with this particular project. However, they reiterated that they said it's been great working with the city. They still really like the general site. And they said they are, they are pursuing another site in, within the region. But they actually said, and they said it's because they have timetable obligations that they don't, you know, they just don't think they can deal with this because of the involvement of the Rail Bureau. However, there's another site that might involve the CCBA, property, a little area, just somewhere parked down the street where the electric pole's on the right side. You don't have to go over the old right of way again. And they actually said that they would actually be interested in that for the next round. And we were a little surprised. I said, are you serious? Do you really end up doing two fast charging stations within the same general area? And they said, actually, they do. They find that that works quite well to actually have two sites because sometimes one site is down because of power outages or whatever. And if they become known that there's two charging sites in the Upper Valley, fast charging, then that's a good thing from their point of view. And they actually started citing a number of cases. So they said they will keep this possibility in the downtown site active, but it's not going to be in this round. It would be, they're basically in a two-year cycle. So they said that it could be pursued in the next cycle round. But it made sense to go ahead and do the groundwork for potential site anyways. So it's not, it is dead for the time being. It's clear they're pursuing another site, but it might come back. But in the meantime, I think we have to work on the Rail Bureau. I mean, part of the issue is there's no clear boundary lines. There's no delineation of what belongs to the city and what belongs to the state. There's simply no delineation.
This goes to so many other areas, like the bridges we have. We have one of the bridges on the Northern Rail Trail that the deck is falling apart. And someone has to fix it, and I'm going to go fix it. Because it won't happen. We'd be debating with Rail Bureau forever because they actually own the bridge. And, you know, I'm going to do it if someone falls in until winter time. We got this flyover right now and it's going to delaminate. By this winter time, someone's going to try to open it and they're going to get hurt, so I'm going to go fix it. We've been working on the rail trail and I'm going to take that road. So I'm going to go spend the money to go get that done so nobody gets hurt. Because it will just take forever to get an answer on that. So this is not the only issue.
In any case, let's move on before we get into the next one.
Yes. All right. Just one thing I want to, we want to form a West Lebanon Advisory Council to implement, what, West Lebanon Advisory Group Committee to work on the recommendations that we're going to get for the street improvements and the other things we want to do in West Lebanon. Make recommendations in regards to Free Center Hill Road and also hopefully what happens with Westbury Yard. We want to get that going. And I talked to Assistant Mayor Beal about this this morning. There's a variety of ways that we can do this. I recently created a committee just to study the option for community center. And I simply created that study room to do that. But there's no councillors on that. There's no appointees from other boards that are beat on that. In this particular case, it would make sense to have at least one councillor. Probably the councillor's in that board or at least one of the admirals councillors, but that's up to you. A member of the Economic Development Commission and also member of the planning board. You appoint both of those people. It does not make sense for me to create a committee and say, yes, you will send a councillor, because that's, I think that's beyond my scope and my rule. The mayor certainly can create that and you can do that quickly. Otherwise, we would go through the normal process of creating a committee. And that makes sense, I would suggest to you, for the statutory committees, but these limited purposes, short timeframe committees, it may make sense to have the mayor simply appoint those people to do that. That's up to you. It's a policy decision you have to make. I need some directions to which way you want me to go so I can go whichever way, somewhat quickly, get that moving as to which way you want to go.
I like the idea of a mayor's task force. That's Counsel Hill.
Yeah, I thought that made sense too. It was a fairly expeditious way to keep it moving but not have to formalize it as part of our ordinances and stuff like that.
So now that consensus is to a board, do you want to think about it more or is there anything to get us through this on yet? I don't need an answer anyway, so I mean, we, yeah, at the end of the day, I'm... So I mean, I, we, you know, at the end of the day, I'm a 12. You can say, yeah, we think it's a bad idea, we want to do this. And then I'll just go with your, with your, we kind of go, I'll start prepping and getting. Maybe this is, that's when it was late at night and I just.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's true, yep.
Yeah. All right, so that's all I've got for that and then we have a non-public to go into.
So we need a motion to enter into non-public session per RSA, we enter RSA 91-A colon 3 to D, consideration of the acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property. I, I, can I move that? I'll move that. Second for that. Counselor Prentice seconds the motion. We have to do a roll call for.
See, I didn't get, did you move Assistant Mayor Bello?
Yes, I, I made the motion to enter into non-public session per RSA 91-A colon 3, round 2D. It's on right now. You'll have it. And it's seconded by Counsel Prentice and roll call.
Assistant Mayor Beal.
Yes.
Counsel Broner.
Broner votes yes.
Counsel Heist.
Heist votes yes.
Counsel Hill.
Hill is yes.
Counsel Prentice.
Yes.
Counsel Sykes.
Yes.
Counsel Winnie.
Counsel Winnie votes aye.
And Counsel Zook.
Yes.
Okay, and that passes eight to zero.
So just, just for the record, what will happen is we'll go on a non-public, deal with this issue. If there's some sort of vote, we will announce that after we come out. If there's some sort of motion to seal or not, we will deal with that. Other than that, it would be your business. For the council, we will adjourn for the night. So we'll be back on the record. We're clear about that and we'll have to leave this meeting and go into the other, to the length that they provided to you.
See you there.